Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is December 4th, 2024. Are we in compliance with the open meeting law?
Yes, we are.
Please call the roll.
Here.
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 Wyman.
Here.
Carolyn.
Here.
We have a forum.
Great. And tonight, we have a student from Jefferson Elementary here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Romeo, if you could stand right over here by the screen and start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Romeo, stay right there.
I want to thank you so much for coming in this evening and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's a big difference when we have students coming to help us out. So there's a certificate of appreciation for you, and thank you very much.
And next, we have Principal Amy Ashton from Jefferson Elementary to give us some highlights of the school.
Well, good evening on this crazy, icy, snowy day. Thank you for the invitation to share information about Jefferson Elementary. In my first few months as principal at Jefferson, I have focused on learning about Jefferson's history and school climate, getting to know students and staff and families, and supporting staff to ensure that students are able to learn in a safe and positive environment at Jefferson. This year at Jefferson, we have 15% of our students that are new to the building. We also have 33% of our staff that are new to Jefferson this year. And our growing numbers in our ESOL population have continued to grow, so we have 13% of our students that are speakers of another language as their primary language. So those are just a few facts to share with you that have been a shift a little bit in Jefferson this year. And I'd also like to share with you information about literacy and social-emotional learning as well as a few other things. So first of all, I want to share that in literacy, our kindergarten and first grade classrooms are doing a phenomenal job continuing to build strong foundational skills at school with explicit and systematic phonics instruction. Recent data from our November Common Assessments shows that about 80% of our kindergarten students were proficient at our recent assessment for blending and segmenting words, so we're excited for that initial data. In the area of social and emotional learning, our counselor in the beginning of the year meets with every child to collect data about their feelings about safety at school. In early October, 97% of our students reported that they felt safe at school, and 100% of students reported that they had an adult at school that they felt safe to go to if they ever had a need. Our staff is working this year to provide more visuals for students so that they feel safe at school and understand the expectations and routines. And so that is something we will continue to work on throughout this year, and you'll be able to see that work because it's visual and up in hallways and in classrooms. Our staff Gallup Poll is a celebration for us at Jefferson. This year, when our staff took the Gallup Poll, they show high levels of engagement in the 71st percentile with being recognized at work and having someone who cares about me being in the highest percentiles. Jefferson also has wonderful partnerships that are blossoming this year. The Downtown Rotary has been a new partnership that has served our school community by volunteering at our Back to School Fair in August, and today, we have 12 Rotarians that are volunteering at Jefferson this evening for our Holiday Treasures Shopping Event. So back to school in a few minutes to go work with all of the staff and families and our PTO for that special event. At Jefferson, we're working hard to build strong relationships, set clear expectations for learning, and engage our students in rigorous learning. I welcome your visit anytime to Jefferson. Thanks for allowing me to share today.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mrs. Ashton? Thank you, it was a great report.
Thank you.
Land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shore of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Okay. Hello. And now, approval of agenda. I have a request to poll number 11, which it's already individually considered, so I guess we've polled it already. Anything else? Or...
No.
Okay. Then we'll approve the agenda by acclamation. Board President's Report. I have two things I'd like to share with you this evening. The first one being a letter that Dr. Davis and I received, and I'd like to read it to you because this is from a community member that has an observation. "We have never met, but I wish to share an observation. Our daughter was hired to serve as a schoolteacher within the Oshkosh School District. She is a third of our children who has either worked or is currently working within the district. When she applied for the position, she informed her mom that if she happens to get hired, her salary decrease would decrease somewhat, and her commuting and daycare expenses would increase. The obvious question was why? Financially speaking, why would you take a step backward to teach within another school district? She explained to us that her sisters and fellow teachers, peers, have spoken highly about the culture that has been emerging over the past few years under the watch of the current school administration. She was told that an environment that promotes positivity, inclusivity, and respect for all was becoming the norm within the OASD. She knew that if what she was being told about that culture was half true, she wanted in. Recently, she attended an orientation session for incoming teachers at Trager Middle School. She explained to us that as she approached the building, a group of folks were gathered outside the entrance. As she came nearer, she was being aware, she became aware that the gathering consisted of district administrators and staff, and the sole purpose for their assembly was to welcome them to the OASD. To put it simply, she found it refreshing and uplifting. I do not pretend to know much of anything concerning the specific challenges that must be met for a school district to be deemed successful. Metrics can be used to measure many outcomes within an organization, but metrics cannot measure a culture of an organization. Metrics cannot be used to measure what the atmosphere within the organization feels like or whether the energy that envelops it is positive or negative. What I do know is that when one is part of something that feels healthy and real, one will recognize it and embrace it. I also know the leadership within the organization sets the tone that will ultimately determine what the environment will be. Clearly, you folks are creating an environment that many school districts could learn from. I felt compelled to encourage you and your team to remain focused and stay the course that you are on. It is being recognized and embraced by many is commendable. I salute you." So I salute our writer, and Dr. Davis, and the teachers, and the culture that everyone in the school district is creating. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item I have, and this is hats off to Teresa Duran and everyone, Katie, that helped her put together this impact report for the Education Foundation. This is an amazing piece of work that highlights everything that is being celebrated and encouraged within the community and with the Oshkosh Education Foundation. This Education Foundation has grown. We've started the gala for the past two years, and it has really brought some visibility to the foundation and shows what the foundation can do to increase the means of our district and those of the students. So we are able to do many things because of the Education Foundation. So hats off to Teresa and Katie, who helped a lot with this project, and anxious for the next gala in May. And that is my President's Report. Next, we have a retirement recognition, and unfortunately, we have five people that we're going to be saying goodbye to this time. The first one is Bobby Arnison, HR Specialist and Recruitment in Central Office, and she's been with the district since 2014. Gregory Jeffers, Assistant Custodian, Fire Person One at Vell Phillips, 1998. Lori Gentry, Program Supervisor at the Recreation Department, 1993. Jason Farney, Physical Education Teacher, Oshkosh West, 1994. And Linda Piran, Director of Special Education, District Wide, since 2013. I have a letter from a former board member, from Christopher Carnes, for Linda Piran. "Hello, School Board Members and School District Administrators. I would like to take a moment to celebrate an amazing person who has done a lot of great things in our community and our school district. I'm very happy for Linda Piran and her upcoming retirement. I've been in the community and in schools, and very few, if any, people are talked about as highly as she has been. The staff love her and respect her and know the amount of work she does to help our students and staff. I know people come into our district to work because of her and the job she does and the support she offers. It is a loss for our district, and while it's an opportunity to find someone new, it'll be an opportunity to celebrate the work that she has done and the person that she is. It'll be hard to find someone to fill her shoes because of the gigantic footprint she has left in our community. Linda, I thank you for all the work you have done, all the time you have given. It is not gone unnoticed and is very much appreciated. You are one of the most genuine and kindest people I have ever met. Congratulations on your upcoming retirement." And I will turn it over to Dr. Herzog for her thoughtful words, and I'm sure there's others that have things to say this evening as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. When I saw this list last week, I was, I'm always surprised by the people on this list because I never think they're old enough. You have to be at least 55 to retire, and I never think any of these people are old enough. But I just want to take an opportunity to thank each and every one of these individuals for the positive impact they have had on students, their colleagues, parents, and our overall community. The list includes, which I just lost here, Jason Farney, who not only has been a physical education teacher but also a coach, has influenced students in that regard. I remember when Lori Gentry was first hired in the school district about 30 years ago and was one of the mainstays in the Recreation Department along with Al Wenig. Bobby Arnison, I think I first met when she was at Emeline Cook, always friendly, outgoing, and shows the welcoming demeanor that we appreciate in our staff. And finally, Linda Piran. I was reflecting on some hiring we did a number of years ago when we were expanding our elementary counseling program, and we interviewed a number of candidates, and one of them had a track record of not being long in the districts where he served, two, three years, and then he'd be gone. I remember saying, "I'd take him for two or three years," because I knew he would make a positive impact, and he did. And Linda Piran certainly, along with these others, has made a very positive impact on students and staff and our community. When I think of programs such as Project Search, the Brewing Futures Program, and the Adapted Sports League, among others, she has really changed the trajectory in terms of advocating for and including our students with special needs. So thank you very much for that, and I wish all of these retirees, even though they're too young, all the very best in retirement, for long, happy, and healthy retirement years.
Thank you.
I also wanted to speak tonight to, I only know two of these individuals personally, and I would really rather wait to hold off on Linda's, but I will say some things first about you, Linda, though, that it has been an absolute pleasure working with you. You've always been a source of joy and respect in this district, that I've worked with you a lot for my own, my kids struggling with dyslexia, and I've always appreciated that Linda listens to us and that she makes us feel like we're not totally crazy when we are trying to pursue some things with the district. But it's much more cool even to see you, though, with your students that you are serving, and the joy that you express when you see their little victories and their huge victories. And like Brewing Futures, I hope is a great capstone on your career here. But yeah, I feel very lucky that we've always had you by our side as we've worked through some difficult things with the district. The other person I do want to speak about is Bobby Arnison, who she, as Barb said, I met her also at Emeline Cook. She was the secretary for most of my, or at least the beginning of my kids' career at E. Cook, and I always, I mean, I feel like school secretaries are a lot for schools. They, I think that they're the heart of the school, I think that they are the mother of the school, and they hold everything together, and Bobby really created that foundation at E. Cook. She made us feel very safe leaving our kids there, and she's really fun to work with. She's made her way through various schools here in the district. I know she's been at South Park, Roosevelt, now here at the district office, and I'm not totally convinced that she will actually completely retire, but I know she has a new grandbaby that I think that's going to be the nail that she has done. But she really was a great welcome, as Barb said, a great welcoming force to help us feel like this was our home and that Emeline Cook was our school home. So I'm going to miss her, but yes, we're missing, we're losing some great people there.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll just, excuse me, just wrap it up by saying congratulations to all five again. Certainly, congratulations for retirement, certainly a loss for the district. Bobby, I've had the opportunity to work with for the last couple of years, and she's been a pleasure, a great addition to the Central Office Team, and we'll certainly miss her. Jason Farney was somebody that's close to me. When I was a new teacher back in 1998, he was a young veteran, if you will, of four years at that point, but as a fellow teacher and coach over at West, just one of those guys that he'd always welcome you in. So, you know, we've got a long, a long relationship, so, you know, it's, he's not going anywhere, he's fine, but it's, I just want to congratulate him formally on a job, job well done, and thousands of kids that have been positively influenced by his, by his work. And then finally, Linda, and we'll have a lot of ending comments for Linda throughout the next year because she's going to work with us until July 30th, and, but two things that come to mind now for Linda, that's pretty clear if you're around her for more than five minutes. So one is passion. So Linda has a clear passion for life, which translates to her work, anybody that she's around, and especially the kids that we serve together. And we'll be tooting the horn for Brewing Futures at the Holiday Parade tomorrow night, and that's a tribute and I think a capstone to Linda's career, I think is a really good way to put that. So, and a legacy that will live on far beyond Linda's time here. And then just also the deep network. Like if you ever talk to anybody in Oshkosh, they all know Linda. Like Linda has networked deeply across the system and across the community, and if you want something done around here, call Linda, and she can set you up with a person to go get that done. So just your passion and your network to be able to do great things for kids and families is unmatched. So thank you for all of your work and efforts, and we'll miss you, but we're still going to have you for six months. So, just to be clear. So, so that's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you to all the retirees for everything that you have done and will continue to do until you walk out those doors. All right. Next, we have Superintendent's Report.
All right, so a lot of great things going on across the system for, in the last couple weeks. So to start with, over at Menominee Elementary School, recently hosted their first family engagement event, bringing together students and their families for a fun-filled night of learning and creativity. Families had a chance to dive into a variety of STEM activities, including making a pair of glasses, designing a boat, and exploring insects through microscopes. Thank you for everyone that joined in. Can't wait to see you at our next Menominee School Family Event. Our Vell Phillips Student Council is a shining example of what it takes to be part of a larger community. Students organized a Halloween dance to raise funds for a heartwarming cause, providing free mittens and gloves for their classmates. The impact was immediate. The council filled the mitten tree before school, and by lunchtime, it was already empty. Luckily, they've been able to fill the tree up again and help even more students. So it's such an amazing demonstration of our students' commitment to supporting each other and their larger community. The student-led effort showcases how young people can make a meaningful difference in our school community. So thank you, everyone, who contributed to that success. First graders at Reed Elementary transformed into young mathematicians throughout an engaging hands-on lesson that brought counting to life. Using number lines and familiar counting tools from their mathematical toolbox, students were busy determining families, families' members' ages. The lesson demonstrated how early math education can be both fun and practical, helping students develop critical thinking skills and making numbers come alive through creative problem-solving strategies and tools they've carefully learned throughout the year. Our district is filled with some of the best and brightest educators and leaders in our area and across the nation. An incredible example of this reality is that three of our Oshkosh Early Learning Program staff members were asked to present with their colleagues across the United States and internationally at the Elevate Conference in Las Vegas. Beth Shendel, who is here with us tonight, Lisa Bruhl, and Rihanna Kinderman shared their expertise in social and emotional learning, presenting six breakout sessions to over 600 educators. Their presentations highlighted the powerful work happening in our Oshkosh preschool classrooms focusing on supporting students' social-emotional development through approaches centered on safety, connection, and problem solving. The opportunity to represent Oshkosh and share innovative educational strategies on a national stage was both an honor and a testament to their expertise and our district's collective commitment to early childhood education. So thank you, Beth, for all of your work, and congratulations on that. Kindergartners at Menominee Elementary School brought the Five Senses to life through an engaging, interactive learning adventure. As a culminating activity for their CKLA Literacy Knowledge Unit, students explored each sense through an exciting hands-on station. From listening to mystery sounds to identifying scents to conducting taste tests and using magnifying glasses to explore spy books, students actively engaged all five senses. They even challenged themselves by identifying hidden objects through touch alone. This is another great example of the impact that our CKLA literacy, of our CKLA literacy field test. We are grateful for so many of our educators who are leaning into this experience and helping transform early literacy in our district. Students from Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West continued our heartwarming tradition by baking pies for Father Carr's before Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving holiday. In two days, our culinary arts students created 430 mini pies and 110 large pies. Beyond mastering culinary techniques like recipe following, ingredient measuring, and product packaging, students discovered the deeper rewards of community service. As one student noted, "The experience was more about, was more than just about baking. It was an opportunity to support those in need in making a meaningful difference in the, during the holiday season." So great work to those students. Our second graders at Shapiro recently headed to the Oshkosh YMCA to explore an important life skill, the important life skill of water safety. This district-wide initiative ensures students are equipped with knowledge and skills that could save lives. From basic swimming techniques to water safety rules, these young learners are gaining confidence and building essential life skills that will stay with them forever. We're so proud to offer our students these experiences that they might not otherwise be accessible to. So a big thank you to the Oshkosh YMCA for partnering with us to create a safe and fun learning environment for all. Over 680 of our eighth graders explored their future careers at the Future U Career Expo hosted by the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce. From hands-on welding simulations to medical demonstrations, our students dove into real-world experiences. Highlights included one-on-one chats with industry pros, discovering high-demand local careers, learning what employers are really looking for, and getting inspired about future possibilities. A huge thanks to the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce and our amazing local businesses for investing in our students' futures. We are looking forward to hosting our first Martin Luther King Jr. Day Celebration on January 20th at Vell Phillips. This event aims to honor Dr. King's legacy through a keynote address, recognition of essay contest winners, community networking, and a continental breakfast. A free event invites the entire community to come together, reflecting on the district's commitment to fostering inclusivity and meaningful dialogue. You can learn more and register on our website. There's still time to apply to be part of the First Oshkosh Schools Academy Cohort. This is a six-month program designed to give community members an in-depth understanding of our district's mission and strategic priorities. Kicking off in January 2025, the program will feature monthly sessions on district operations, academic goals, staff development, and community engagement. Applications are due on December 11th, so visit our website for more information to apply. We currently have 25 people signed up for that, so we're excited about that opportunity. So thanks for everyone who's taken advantage of that. And then finally, just want to thank everyone for continuing to be open and providing opportunities for me to be across the, across the system and across the city to spread the great work of our, of our kids and staff. So, and that concludes the Superintendent's Report for tonight.
Wonderful. District Administrator Supplemental Reports, the verbal report from the November 13th, 2024 Listening Session, Mrs. Conrad Peters.
On November 13th, there were four participants in the listening session. Participants inquired about updates to the School Resource Officer Memo of Understanding. The discussion also touched upon first-quarter data from the Oshkosh Police Department that revealed a reduction in citations across the district when compared to last year. Participants asked about how we are addressing pervasive gaps in achievement. Dr. Coleman outlined OASD strategies to address these gaps, including mindset and bias training, diverse instructional materials, and raising expectations. He also addressed that in the workshop later that evening. Concerns were raised about busing and transportation, including adjustments to walk zones and 4K routing. One participant also questioned the inclusion of gender on field trip forms, and that actually is going to be taken care of in the next school year to make adjustments to those forms. The discussion further explored academic achievement scores and the district's response. The discussion continued with comments from a recent Go Transit meeting, potential changes to routes, and how that impacts the Oshkosh area school district. And the meeting also addressed providing possibly transportation lessons for students on how to use local transportation. For follow-up, Mr. Nihans and Ms. Conrad are working with Kobassan to mock up routing during the months of December and January to look at more efficiently providing additional, additional bus routes and reducing walk zones as well as 4K routing, especially with consideration for a possible 4K center in the future. Ms. Conrad will take a look at the revision of the field trip form, which has been completed. And then Dr. Coleman has revisions of targets and goals to the Education Committee that will be going into policy at a later date when approved by the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next report is Mr. Kemmer, Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Screener, Sabers.
All right, good evening. So my report provides an update on Sabers, as you mentioned, which accounts for 30% of the Safe and Healthy Schools core area. So for those that aren't familiar with Sabers, it's an assessment tool that measures the potential risk for students in the areas of social, emotional, behavioral problems. And Sabers, really the tool itself has two key components. So the first component, which is called Sabers, is a teacher observation and rating scale. And the second part, called My Sabers, is a student rating scale. So the Sabers, we only use in grades K through 5, that's a teacher rating part again, and the My Sabers we use in grades 2 through 12. So when we look at our KPI, we tend to use the My Saber scores for that purpose just because it spans a broader range of students in our district than the Sabers does. We conduct Sabers three times a year, so once in fall, once in winter, and once in spring. And the surveys themselves are relatively short, they're only about 20 questions, which makes it convenient for both our teachers and our students. And then based on the scores, students are rated as either high risk, some risk, or low risk. And there are three separate indices that we use in addition to the overall score. So those three indices look at social behavior, academic behavior, and emotional behavior. So we use this data in a lot of different ways. So one of the ways our schools typically use it is they identify students who are at high risk or some risk and cross-reference that with other data to develop intervention groups. groups. We're able to isolate larger groups of students or grade levels that may be struggling in particular areas to provide additional support or resources to those groups. And that really gives us an indication in terms of the balance of our system. So, we know roughly how many students we should have at about each level, whether that be high-risk, some-risk, or low-risk. And if we see that there are disproportionalities within those levels, it gives us an indication of where we might need to focus our attention to create more balance. So, based on our fall benchmark, we had 78% of our students in the low-risk category, 3% in the high-risk category, and 19% in the some-risk category. So, these are also the scores that we had on the My Sabers during our spring benchmark. So, we've had some stability in our scores over time. These were also similar scores to what we had in our last fall benchmark in 2023. So, some of the trends that we continue to see, we continue to see that our teacher ratings on Sabers tend to score more students in the high-risk category and fewer students in the low-risk category than the My Sabers component, which again is student ratings. We continue to see that students in grades K-1 and 2 have the most students in the high-risk category and fewer students in the low-risk category. And if you think about it, those are our students who probably need the most instruction and support related to social and emotional learning, so that would make some sense. And then, we continue to see gaps based on racial identity, and that's more pronounced with the Sabers or the teacher ratings than the My Sabers. So, in terms of SCL programming going forward, one of the things that we did this year as a district is we reconfigured our district-wide social and emotional learning team. So, now that team has representatives from every single school in the district. And what we do is we develop 90-day plans that those individuals then can take back to their schools to create more consistency across the district. So, within those plans, it kind of serves as the guardrails in terms of what we want to see all schools doing from a social and emotional learning standpoint. And then, within those plans, they have the flexibility to really make it their own, just because we know every one of our schools is different. Along with that, we have monthly check-ins that are done with our social and emotional learning coordinators. And that's just an opportunity for us to speak with our school representatives, see what's going well, see what they're struggling with, and then offer support wherever we can. And then, there's also a form that they complete every 90 days, just so we can have a better indication of what their progress looks like or some of the unique or cool things that they're doing related to social and emotional learning. Along with that, our SCL team is starting to develop a quick tips communication that's going to go to families each month, starting this month. And then, I'll just give parents a better indication of what we're doing around social and emotional learning and tips for things that they can do at home to help support their child. And then, finally, some additional good news, the district received the BGA Stop School Violence Grant, which is going to provide us with nearly $1 million over the next three years to further bolster our SCL work along with some of our equity work and mainly SCL equity and then school safety as well. There's a component for that.
Where's the grant coming from?
It's a federal grant through the Department of Justice.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Kemmer.
I'd be curious to hear more about, you've mentioned how there's gaps in racial identity. And from looking at also the written report, it sounds to me that teachers may be over-identifying Black kids and under-identifying kids who identify as white as being at risk. What does that mean? And what does that impact? I'm a little concerned about bias or the idea that, okay, these kids are identified as having things outside of the school's control that they're just not ready for learning. What do we do when we see these kind of gaps coming up?
Yeah. The unfortunate reality is that data, the disproportionality aligns with our behavioral data and some of the gaps that we see academically. And I know we've talked a lot about implicit bias with our equity work, whether or not that factors in, I don't know. You know, that is something that we continue to examine and look at and hope over time that that starts to align more with the My Sabers. But in terms of drawing conclusions about how to account for that gap, I guess there's really no way to know for sure.
So, if a teacher identifies a kid as high-risk, what happens then?
So, we cross-reference that data with the My Sabers. So, there's not necessarily something that happens as a result of being identified high-risk, but if the student also identifies themselves as high-risk, or if they have some significant behaviors that are coming through in our data, or academic gaps or deficits, all those data points are cross-referenced to try to identify the best supports or resources that we can provide for each student.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I know my kids have taken this, but just out of curiosity, what indicators are there that, you know, make a kid high-risk? You mentioned some of them, you know, like educational gaps, like what are some examples? Just so in my own mind, I can think, how are we identifying kids that are high-risk? And what are some potential interventions we do to try to help them?
Those are really good questions. So, when we think about social and emotional learning, we think about skills that help students to manage their behavior, build relationships with others, or make responsible decisions. So, the 20 questions on the Sabers really align with those areas, and they factor into the indices I mentioned before. So, when we think about skill development, what we can do is particularly isolate which indices, whether it be academic, social, or emotional, a particular student needs the most support, and then align them with the resources. So, it could be, if it's academic behaviors, it could be things like focus or like executive skills, things that can help support students from an academic standpoint. If it's more social, if they score higher on the social indices, it's working with them specifically on social skill development. So, that could be anything from how to form friendships, how to have conversations, that sort of thing. And then, finally, emotional regulation is another big one. So, there are groups that we run all the time in most of our schools, particularly at the elementary level, around skills that help build emotional regulation for students.
And you had mentioned that this tool will mirror academic performance in a lot of different ways?
I don't...
Or, you know, or you could tell if someone's, if a student's identified high-risk, then you would mention that'll parallel?
I think we see trends in some of our data, whether that be our Sabers data, academic data, behavioral data. And those trends are important to identify and keep an eye on, just because I think it gives us an overall indication of the health and well-being of our system in general. So, I don't necessarily think it will perfectly mirror
Okay, yeah, yeah.
...our academic data, but again, just looking for those trends.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Mrs. Kiffmeyer, Student Involvement in Fall Activities.
So, this is a report that we do three times a year that aligns to our core area of engagement and communication. And the specific KPI is the student involvement at our high school level. So, we're measuring what our kids are doing outside of the academic realm, how many are involved within students. And so, currently, for our fall measure, we have 51.92% of our high school students involved in one or more activities from the fall. The good news is that we are up over 15% from the fall of 2023. But in true transparency, we've done a lot of work on making sure we're accurately reporting what students are involved in. So, I do want to be clear, I don't know that there was necessarily a targeted piece to that necessarily, other than that we were really strategic to make sure all the extracurriculars, clubs, and our advisors are accurately getting that data entered into how we pull our data. So, I do want to be clear on that piece. We have moved from the two-star rating to the three-star rating at over 50%, which is good to hear, because I was a little disappointed at the end of last year that we were at 46.84%. And I didn't feel like that was an accurate representation of our students. So, like, we know that from fall to winter to spring, we should build in terms of participation for our clubs' activities and our sports for students. And so, it did increase over last year, which we would expect our end-of-the-year data should also increase as well. So, that's good. We did close our gaps from the fall of 2023 to the fall of 2024 in race, social economic status, and English proficiency. One area that we did not close our gaps on are our students with disabilities are participating at a much lower rate than our students with disabilities, and that's definitely a focus area for us. Not that the other areas aren't, because we still have disproportionality, but we are closing the other areas. In order, we have a wide variety of extracurricular activities, from sports for boys and girls, clubs and activities such as jazz band, FFA, National Honor Society, Black Student Union. And the good news is that it doesn't stop there. Anytime a student has an interest in a club that they don't see something that fits their needs or their hobbies, they can go ahead and request that to be formed, and all we need to do is get an academic advisor to help support that. So, there's been new clubs added over the last year, which is exciting to see. And then, there's a full list that we offer at our high schools and our high school course guides that are on our website, as well as in the printed course guide. White students are participating at a higher rate, but again, we closed that gap by over 5% from the fall of last year, was a gap close of 5.3%. Non-social-economically disadvantaged students also participate at a higher rate than socially-economically disadvantaged. But again, the good news is at over 5.5%, we closed that gap from the fall of '23 to the fall of '24. Our gap between our non-Esol students and our Esol-speaking students, that gap was closed by over 14%, which was pretty exciting. But again, I put a little pause on the excitement for that, because I think it also had to do with our reporting more accurately in that piece as well. So, just in true transparency on that piece. And then, like I told you, a focus area for us is really looking at our students who have disabilities and finding ways to make sure that they find clubs, activities, and sports that they can participate in, because that definitely is our largest gap that we have right now currently from our fall data. One of the things that has kind of been brought up and talked about is how do we advertise? How do parents know? How do students know? How do you get involved? And so, at both high schools, clubs and activities are at the eighth-grade open house. They are also at the August open house, so there's tables and booths available to kind of like generate, you know, interest in that piece. They are on both websites, they're highlighted in Facebook posts as well. And one of the newest things that we talked about with both high school principals is looking at adding blurbs to the newsletter of like upcoming activities that are happening with our clubs to highlight. And then, West is also going to try to pilot a monthly calendar that they're going to put on social media of the different clubs and activities that are happening that month, and we're going to see how that goes.
That's great. I have one question.
Yep.
Was Madrigals not on the list before, and now it is?
It still is not on the list.
You're kidding me?
Yeah. Yeah. We haven't included that yet.
Oh, my gosh, the hours that those students put in.
Well, and technically, we're going to use that in the winter data, I think, because most of their performances happen after the fall and the practice happens.
So, will.
Yeah. So, we're going to actually include that. And I was going to talk about that in the winter report, if we saw another big jump, that could be part of that. But again, it goes back to time, like if we say this is a KPI and it's an important indicator, it should be accurate to what our students are involved in. And so, making sure that we are accurately reporting that. So, we did a much better job of cross-referencing actually what was put into IC when we pulled our data versus what clubs and activities and sports were actually running and making sure those students were put into the database.
That's great.
I have a couple of questions. When you mentioned that they just need to find an advisor, does that advisor have to be a staff member?
It does not.
Okay, good. But I am pretty, I'm still a little concerned about a couple of things. Well, first, I love that there's going to be some more efforts on, including parents, to encourage kids' participation in this. I think that that's been lacking significantly. And I get that high schoolers are supposed to be independent, but they're trying to figure stuff out, too. And they don't know how to be involved, and sometimes they need a little push. And that being said, I'm also disappointed, though, that the idea of this monthly calendar is going to be piloted at West instead of North, where it is clear that North is lagging in student involvement. And that is, as a parent of a kid at North, that's very disappointing to me. And I get that there are a lot of other factors at play between the two schools, but I am kind of, I'm very disappointed in North's participation and the ability of kids to get involved. And I would hope that maybe we can shift some or put some fire in the administration and whoever else there to do better, to get more diverse involvement of students there. And help kids figure out how to actually get involved and stay involved and find out about stuff.
And just to answer the piece about the difference between the two high schools, West actually has a social media advisor and North does not, which is why they're going to pilot it first, because they have somebody designated to...
Maybe that's something that we need to have at North then.
Yep, correct. So, they're going to pilot it first and dedicate to see what that looks like, and then we're going to revisit that.
Yeah. But we are at a 10% deficit at North compared to West for student involvement, and that's a very important way for kids to learn real-life skills and how to get involved in stuff in the rest of their lives. So, I hope that we can have some efforts at North to mirror what's happening at West.
Well, and that gap actually was closed from last year to this year in terms of participation, and I understand that 10% is still 10%. But there are a lot of factors that play into what kids do outside of school, so we will continue to work on that.
And I know that they do a lot of things in, I don't know, it's called Excel and Wildcat Time or whatever, but I hope that kids have the opportunity to actually know about those things and actually get to attend them.
Yep.
My question is kind of related to Molly's question regarding the differences between the numbers at North and West. On one of the slides, it says that the non-white participants at West are, there's 62% of non-white participants in activities. And at North, it's only 36%. Do you have any idea on why there's such a drastic, I mean, that's almost half. Are there fewer clubs or fewer opportunities for non-white students?
Not necessarily fewer clubs or opportunities. Some has to do with club participation and some has to do with like what sports and what kids are involved in that. And football is a huge, huge piece of that. I haven't dug into the actual demographics of that, so I don't want to speak to that being the why, but that's definitely something that we can dig into.
Mr. Wright?
I apologize, I've been talking a bit tonight. But, so, my child at West, my wife was looking for something for her to additionally get involved with, and she pulled the list of actual options, club-wise, and brought it home. And then, my daughter, who's an eighth grader, and my daughter, who's currently at West, looked through it, and it was impressive, like a whole bunch of clubs that we didn't even know
Existed.
existed or were there. You know, there's a tremendous effort being placed on forming these clubs. And I only share this story to make the point that if I didn't know they were all there, which
Sure.
maybe I should have, as a dad, and my wife's really good at that stuff, then for sure, there's a lot of other kids. But it was an impressive list. You know, I mean, there's a lot of effort to put these things together, and I think just finding a way to communicate that, like, I think would be really good.
Dr. Herzak.
Thank you. First of all, I want to commend you for coming forward and sharing and providing evidence of closing some of those gaps since 2023. I have a couple of wonderings. One is, I wonder how we invite parents and students to share with us why students are or are not participating. Secondly, I looked at, I'm focused right now on the slide on students, English proficient students versus ESOL students. Many years ago, there was a similar report to the board, and it was noted that, so even before Mr. Mack was here, so this goes back quite a few years, we noted that many of our ESOL students were not participating, and we reached out and we asked why. And it was a cultural issue in that the girls were expected to go home after school and typically care for younger children or help the mom get the meal together for the evening. So, we had greater participation at that time among the males who were part of the ESOL population. So, sometimes the differences can be accounted for in terms of that. I recently met with a mother... a mother whose son was very interested in an extracurricular activity along the athletic lines. And she said, well, he was interested, but didn't think we could afford it. And I asked if they had filled out a form for free and reduced lunch. They had not. I said, well, if you do that, you can get those fees waived or only pay partial fees. She wasn't aware of that. So if, if it's a financial issue, maybe that needs to be promoted, that there are ways to participate, even if you don't, you're not able to pay the full cost of participation.
Yeah. And that's something that we've struggled with, I think, as a district overall in terms of our school lunch programs have mostly become free for breakfast and lunch for all of our students, which has, I think, decreased the amount of families who have, go to fill out that form. Because we've done a lot of work in our district to remove barriers such as fees for classes and reducing the extracurricular fee and all of those pieces that would have been encouragements to fill out that form. And so getting that message out that there is a benefit, like with CAP courses and our AP courses and all of those things, is a continual push that we talk about as a team and will continue to work on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Johnson, staff engagement.
Good evening. This report will provide an update on the district's employee engagement efforts. This is a key performance indicator within the Engagement and Communication Core area of our strategic plan, and it represents twenty-five percent of this core area. We are excited to share the results of our latest Fall two thousand and twenty-four Gallup survey. Employee engagement has risen to fifty-four percent, up from forty percent in the spring, well above the national average of thirty percent. Additionally, actively disengaged employees has decreased to five percent, down from eight percent in spring, again, below the national average of sixteen percent. These improvements have moved, moved us from the three star rating to the four star rating in our strategic plan. So a couple of actions that the district has implemented that we believe has contributed to these improvements are the implementation of our rounding meetings. So what this consists of, our executive team members collaborating with their direct reports and their staff to first go over the results of their latest survey. These efforts include, of course, celebrating their highest results in their questions and their, of the Q twelve survey, but then also looking at those bottom two survey results in their questions and coming up with action plans and how we can improve those. So I come back with a workshop in the spring, and I will plan on including some of those action plans that the principals are putting into place in their buildings and also supervisors within their departments. Excuse me. And then also the implementation of stay surveys. So we, as a district, still do offer exit interviews for those employees who are leaving our district. What these interviews are meant to do is to really collaborate with our employees and learn more about what gets our employees to stay within our district, but also what might tempt them to leave. So if you remember, we piloted, piloted this in two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, and it allowed us to create and learn about some themes that we learned from our employees. And then we created action plans. So if you remember, you approved the increase of our FTE for our behavioral ISTs for this school year. So that was one of the themes that we learned from our employees. The second one really had to deal with compensation. So in our office, we created a timeline, a four-year analysis. So the first year, last year, we analyzed our PRA's and their starting salaries. This year, we're working through the NTEA, which is all of our custodial, maintenance and critical employees. Next year will be teachers, and the fourth year will be all of our, the other employee groups. And we'll continue those cycle every four years analyzing those employee groups. And that third theme really was around recognition. So what I did is I reached out to all of our union groups, OEA, OPEA, NTEA, and received names of individuals who are interested in participating in a, a group or a committee to come together to talk about how are they interested in being recognized? What are some rewards or incentives that they're interested in? So I have those names, and the next step is for me to reach out and to, to set that first meeting, to really learn from one, from them what they're looking for. So really, looking ahead, we're committing, committed to continuing to improve our employee engagement. Our immediate goal is to, of course, maintain the level that we've reached at that fifty-four percent while ensuring that our actively disengaged remains at or below five percent. But really, our long-term goal is to continue to increase these numbers. We'd like to reach that sixty percent and break it, get those employee engagement numbers up while continuing to keep our actively disengaged numbers down at that three percent or lower. Any questions?
Great job. Dr. Herzak.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say I was very impressed with your report. And there were several things that stood out for me. Number one was item three C, where you reported the decrease in the actively disengaged employees from nineteen percent, which was during COVID, to five percent. So in roughly three years, that has dropped, I guess, seventy-five percent. I also was impressed with three E, where you talked about the stay interviews and also talked about plans to address items that staff have brought up relative to compensation, recognition, improvement of their support, including the ISTs. And finally, number four D on goals. Sometimes maybe other school districts do surveys, but they don't do follow-up. But this district does. So I really, I really appreciate what you've outlined therein in four D moving forward. So thank you for your report.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I have a question about the participation rate. It looks like the purchase, participation rate is pretty high. Are you happy with that? And what percentage of employees are completing this survey?
The participation rate is quite high. We have just over fifteen hundred employees. However, in this last survey, we, we did do some digging into certain areas where we see some improvement needed. So what we're doing is working on ways in which, so as you know, we concentrated these efforts to be on a PD day, so that way buildings could get together during their time and offer the opportunity for employees to come together. So as we think about professional development days, not all employee groups participate in that. So really trying to focus with those supervisors on how we can give opportunity for those individuals to come together to complete the survey as well. So that's something that we, we are addressing at this time.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hes.
I got two questions. Or one question and a comment. First, I'm curious, in the fall, can you kind of describe how, how we ask them to participate in this? What is, what is the timeframe? And is the medium, I'm assuming, on a computer?
It is. So we use, we go through a third completely confidential. Our office receives the list of participants. We update it so that way we make sure that all of the employees who may have moved buildings, that they're under their correct supervisor. And then that information is given to CISA, who administrates this survey. They send it out. And again, it's offered on a PD day, so that way individuals can come together and complete this.
And I guess one question, kind of comment. I was recently playing around with some survey data from Gallup. And I think one of the things that we saw was, it seems like Gallup offers kind of different levels of how much information you can have with it. And that there were many entities where if they had access to the data, where they could partition the respondents by kind of early career, mid-career, and late career, they saw quite different levels of engagement in that. And that allowed them to then kind of target their responses. So I'm wondering, do we have that level of data?
I do believe that we have the data that shows us a zero to five-year employee and so on. So we are able to dig into it that way as well.
I mean, I don't want to see it, but I think.
Yes.
It could help get this even higher potential. Thank you.
Yeah. And again, we work with CISA on that. And they, they also do a similar assessment. So yeah, it's been a really good tool. And it's one of the things that I think is also a really positive indicator for us as a leading indicator for student achievement, right? So from a staff standpoint, when you have engaged staff members, you can have better retention. And it's a way to be able to energize a workforce. And so the, the level that we were, you know, currently able to achieve, and again, as through Sabrina's leadership, being able to, to break through that sixty percent mark is where, certainly where we're, where we're headed. But really just proud of the work of everyone to be able to just lean in and, and really have it, the, the important part of it is, is to really have it spur conversations about what's needed in the, in the workplace and make sure that, that managers and principals are able to help support, support people wherever they are. So it's really, it's really great news. So and great work by Sabrina to be able to, you know, continue to reinforce and bring those scores up. So hold on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Kemmer, student attendance quarterly report.
I'm back.
We've missed you.
All right. So our student attendance is part of our Engagement and Communication Core area of our KPI, and it counts for fifteen percent of that area. So we, we track student attendance for this KPI based on our student attendance rate, which currently sits at ninety-four point four percent. Over the past few years, we've, we've been fortunate in that we've been above the state average. This is the first time we're slightly below the state average by about half a percentage point. So I'm hoping that over the course of the year, we can get back to where we were, even though we're currently at a four star rating. Something that we see with attendance rate is it typically decreases over the course of the year. So oftentimes, we start out in the four or five star category, what would be. And we tend to slide back a little bit throughout the course of the year. So hopefully we don't see too much of a slide, but I just wanted to issue that word of caution as well. So when broken down by race, disability status, gender, socioeconomic status, we continue to be pretty much in line with what we see at the state level. In some areas, we're above or slightly above, and in some areas, we're below or slightly below. So overall, some of the things that we're, we're working on to help improve student attendance, go through our Attendance Matters Committee. So that's a committee that, that's been around probably three or four years now, but it's made up of school district staff members and community stakeholders. We meet a few times a year, and then there are some that have formed out of that as well. So at our most recent meeting on October thirty-first, we talked, talked about some of the updates that we left off with last year, including some good news that our tech department is exploring communication apps that would make it easier for school staff to engage and communicate with parents and families. That's something that came up at our countywide attendance meeting last year, that some of our, our neighboring districts have used that and have seen the benefits of that as it relates to attendance. So something that we're, we're hoping that we can utilize at some point in the near future. Last year, one of our subcommittees also updated our Attendance Letter of Concern. Previously, that letter of concern had been kind of punitive in nature and somewhat threatening. And really, we wanted to change the language to make it more supportive and create awareness and educate parents on, on the impact of their student missing school. So typically, we'd send a Letter of Concern note after eight absences. And that's something our social workers do. Now that we have a new Letter of Concern, we're also working on automating that process. So instead of our social workers having to take the time to print out the letters and send them, that they go out automatically once a student reaches that threshold. Along with that, our social workers gave an update. They ran a back-to-school fair this year at our Tiny House Village in town. And that was a huge success, getting resources out to the parents and students who are living at Tiny House Village. That's something that we're going to continue to do in the years ahead. And then we reestablished our, our subcommittees in terms of talking about some of the works and working goals that they're going to be focusing in on throughout the course of this year. So our next meeting is going to be in late January to continue to talk about our progress and things we can do to support student attendance.
Mrs. Carolyn?
I just want to commend you on having that conversation with the Attendance Matters Committee. We saw, listened to a speaker at one of the WASB conventions, and he was talking about how positive recognition, we, a lot of our students have transportation issues, right? And sometimes it's hard for them to get to school, especially in the winter months. And what, what happens, this doesn't happen in our school anymore, but sometimes they get to school and they're late. And instead of being, they're reprimanded instead of being congratulated for making it there. So while we can't change the fact that they're late, we can change the experience. Instead of saying, you're tardy, you're late, we can say, thank you for coming. And I think that it sounds like that's what we're doing with this committee. And I am also pleased to see that the, the language that goes out in some of those letters is going to be changed because as of now, they are kind of threatening and intimidating. And people think that, you know, they're going to get in trouble and everything. So I'm really happy to see that. Thank you.
I'm just curious, I'm, I'm very glad that you're working on the subcommittees and you listed out what they were. I'm curious, so for example, like Stephanie mentioned, that, you know, transportation is obviously an issue. When the subcommittee makes a recommendation that perhaps is outside the purview of your Attendance Matters Committee, like so possibly changing busing or the bigger picture issues, how, I always get concerned when you have committees and subcommittees, not you, people in general, that people, they make recommendations and, but nothing happens from them. How, how can we be assured that, you know, that, that recommendations that come out of these groups are actually going to be acted on?
Yeah. So I, I think one of the things that we do is we examine feasibility of every recommendation. And, you know, for some of our recommendations, transportation's a difficult one because, you know, there's, there's obviously a cost that comes with transportation. And being a bigger district, you know, ideally, we'd be able to transport every student, but that isn't, you know, fiscally possible. So some of the things are talking with our business office about what might be possible then. You know, if we don't have the funds to transport everybody, how might that look? Whether it be establishing hubs, looking at our, our walk zones. So I know Mr. Nekhatz has been very receptive to having some of those conversations. So it's not that, those recommendations are ignored. We just have to take a closer look. And if we can't accomplish the recommendation, we always think about what maybe could we do instead.
I just want to follow up on that, too. Well, you mentioned that there are community members on these. Are there parents on the Attendance Matters Committee?
Yes.
Okay. I continue to encourage you to do. There are a big variety of parents on that committee.
Thank you. Oh, Dr. Herzak.
Thank you. One of the things that I was wondering about was the root causes for attendance. And you've identified some of them. I had jotted down possibly weather. That could be anything from rain to the very windy weather that we were experiencing on our way over here tonight. Do they have appropriate clothing? Some of the students have to walk a considerable distance. And if it's raining or their, you know, a car goes by and sprays them with whatever's in the street, that's a problem. Another question I had was access to hygiene products for girls. There's, there have been a number of articles that have received state, if not national, attention on that issue. Oshkosh Southwest Rotary recently received a grant which has provided a, a little nightstand, as it were, to house hygiene products for girls at one of the restrooms each at North and West. And I know that the Fox Valley Community Foundation, I probably don't have that name right, but it's the organization that, that addresses needs in Appleton. And they've also partnered in the Green Bay area so that any school who feel they need to have hygiene products for their girls so that they can attend school, there's a way of providing that. So I know that's being looked at here at our own community foundations for the Women's Fund. I know decisions have been made at this point, but I do wonder if, you know, we have girls who aren't able to come to school because they don't have access to the hygiene products that would allow them to stay in school all day. And that's not probably something they're going to.
Talk about.
Talk about. So.
Yeah.
It's a very sensitive area, obviously.
And I do want to recognize our school social workers, because they do an amazing job of really making sure that they either have access right in school to certain things that students need, like, like hygiene products. Or if we don't have access to those in school, finding the resources in the community or other places to get those. So we have an outstanding group of social workers, and they really work tires, tirelessly to support our families and eliminate the barriers that prevent students from coming to school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kemmer.
Thank you.
Are there any committee reports? Mrs. Carolyn?
Policy and Governments Committee met on. Policy and Governments Committee met on Tuesday, November 21st at 11:00 a.m. in the boardroom at the central office. We reviewed 16 policies. I will summarize just a couple of them. Policy 6152 pertaining to student fees, fines, and chain charges was updated to include a reference to fines for damaged or lost items. Policy 6320 Purchasing was updated to increase thresholds for bids and requests for proposals, as well as the removal of language for single items of supplies. So the policy is consistent with other purchasing apology, policies that were recently updated. Policy 1260 Incapacity of the Superintendent was updated to state that the board would convene within five days to name an acting superintendent should the superintendent ever be incapacitated, and we hope that never happens. Thirteen policies that were part of the HR Policy Consolidation Project were turned for additional committee reviews after making suggestions for the additional updates. Five of these policies are on tonight's board agenda for approval of the suggested updates. These include 3230 Ethics and Conflict of Interest, 3362 Employee Anti-Harassment, 3124.01 Letter of Reasonable Assurance for Support Staff, 3214 Staff Gifts, 3362.01 Threatening Behavior Towards Staff Members. The remaining eight policies had no additional changes. The meeting adjourned at 12:04 p.m. The full set of minutes is on the district's website for your viewing. The community will meet again on January 7th at noon in the boardroom of the OASD Administration Office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Education Committee?
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The Education Committee met on Wednesday, November 6th. One of the actions taken was to approve an additional course for the 2526 Course Guide. That's a senior health course. We also reviewed the Math Forward and the iReady programs in grades three through eight with Dr. Coleman, who provided the committee with the results of math testing for grades three through eight. The results are 11.65% higher from students participating in the pilot for Bridges and Illustrious Math. He stated that the focus is on implementing with integrity around rigor and engagement. Overall, 45% of students in grades three through eight demonstrated proficiency in math based on the iReady Spring Assessment. The district target for 2324 was 56%, so we fell somewhat short. A different program forefront is being used to collect and strategically use math data to inform instructional practices and to identify needs for student supports. For the middle school level, iReady mirrors the forward data with no weak strands. This is the first year with a new curriculum. Dr. Coleman requested that everyone keep in mind that it takes time to see optimal results when you're changing curriculum or instructional materials, and that's typically three to five years. There are some immediate indicators, however, that are showing progress. At this point, the administration concurs that Bridges Math is the best instructional program to provide all students with access to rigorous and engaging learning experiences. Math curriculum staff are making sure that the tools available are fully used throughout, through the practice of visiting classrooms with principals accompanying them. This has been helping to make sure that teachers have the tools and support to implement with integrity. Then we moved on to reading and iReady for grades three through eight. The district had received a two-star rating in this category and will need to make adjustments to policy-driven outcome goals as the PALS assessment is no longer in use. The district will need to update the goals to reflect our use of iReady for students in grades one through eight. Student proficiency is up two and a half percent over the 23 score with all grade levels improving. The percentage of students in grades three through eight who were proficient in reading according to the iReady assessment increased by 3%. This number is slightly below our goal, but is the highest percentage of students proficient in reading since the pandemic, and a continued upward trend is anticipated. The focus will continue to be on explicit and systemic systematic phonics and foundational literacy instruction in the early grades. The district is continuing the field study with CKLA and working with the DPI Early Learning Project. The main focus in grades six through eight will be learning and applying tools, as well as working with building administration, doing walkthroughs and assisting in making sure that the tools are being used and teachers are supported. The Summer LIF program was designed to assist students who are underserved and have been identified as needing interventions. This targeted strategy provides students with an opportunity to receive assistance in the summer to help with literacy and to reduce the summer slide. The Summer LIF program allows students, or excuse me, teachers and coaches to learn new effective ways to get students to engage using the best practices for serving student needs. While the district is still below the state level, work continues to close the gap between the state and the district levels. The district has made significant investments in human resources, instructional materials, and professional development. CKLA implementation began this field, this year as a field test in approximately 40% of our elementary classrooms. Next year, there will be full CKLA implementation, which will evolve and align our literacy program across the entire district. Next, we moved on to ACT Composite Scores. The district is at 18.9 this year, where the rating was 18.6 last year. The district has increased mean scores and proficiency scores from 2023 to 2024. These are actual comparative numbers. All academic areas in ACTs went up, showing actual celebrations. There was a 2.5% increase in college readiness in ELA, or English Language Arts, and a 3.7% increase in college readiness in math. The DPI changed the proficiency cut scores. Persistent gaps are being addressed by analyzing ACT data with specific skill sets, systematic in approaches. The meeting adjourned at 8:51 a.m. The next meeting will be a week from today, December 11th at 8:30 a.m. Thank you.
Facilities and Finance?
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. Facilities and Finance met on Thursday, November 14th at 7:30 a.m. We focused on the Merrill Memorial Area, the track and zoning. Mrs. Conrad Peters and Mr. Nihans shared updates on the progress on the deconstruction of the Merrill Building. Images were shared on, regarding the potential green space and Memorial Garden. The City of Oshkosh and State Historical Preservation Office have both approved of the plan. Due to the 60-day delay in the deconstruction process, additional costs have been accrued, as well as the delay of the placement of topsoil. Next, we went on to Recreation Department Fees. Mr. Helmbricht, both high school activities directors and the director of the Recreation Department and Director of Business Services reviewed the current fee schedule for use of OASD facilities. Previous fee scheduled, schedule had not been thoroughly reviewed since 2011. A new category is being recommended, which consists of schools that are not OASD schools, as well as any collegiate club or team. The fees would be comparable to the fees that the Nina and Appleston School Districts are currently using. Mrs. Conrad Peters provided a summary of feedback on the sessions regarding facility consolidation and made herself available for questions and comments. This committee discussed all of the avenues that are currently being utilized to get feedback from the community. Finally, we moved on to FEMA BRIC, that's B-R-I-C, Grant Proposal Process with Mrs. Conrad Peters. Discussions took place regarding applying for such a grant, which usually takes 36 months to meet the various deadlines. This grant would make it possible for the district, the City of Oshkosh, and the Town of Algoma to be able to have dedicated locations for community members to go in cases of natural disasters such as tornadoes and blizzards. We had an additional topic on the agenda, which was moved to our next meeting, which will be December 12th at 7:30 a.m. And that topic is the preliminary budget discussion for 2025-26. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Thank you. Next, we move on to non-agenda-related public forum and agenda-related public forum. We have no one signed up this evening. So we'll be moving on to our workshop, Phase Two Follow-Up and Feedback. Mrs. Conrad Peters.
Good evening. In addition, I have Nate Konstein and Clint Sully from Bray-Arke Tech joining us as well.
And as we get started, just want to remind the board, this will be, this is a follow-up based on our community feedback sessions that we started to discuss at our last meeting with some recommendations to come back with some revised costing as we move forward. Just want to remind the board and the community of just timeline that we're working under related to the potential of, of a referendum. Tonight, the primary focus of tonight is to be able to get to a defined scope, if at all possible. So that would be helpful for us administratively as we're moving forward. So as you're listening through tonight's sessions, if there's anything that you'd like to add or subtract or edit from a scope standpoint, really important night tonight to be able to, to work through that. So if we can get to a defined scope at the end of the night, that's going to allow us to be able to work towards a question. As, as you know, the referendum questions are very legalese and specific to, to a school referendum that would be on the ballot. And so there's some time that it takes to be able to define what that question is because that has to encompass the scope. So we need the scope first. And then if you can, if we can define the scope tonight, we can get a draft question back to you on December 18th would be the plan. And so for discussion around that draft question and make any edits or changes that we would need to from between December 18th and January 8th, to be able to get potential approval for a referendum question on January 8th, that would get us inside of the window that we need to pass a referendum question to get on the ballot on, on April 1st. If we were after April 8th, then we, and still wanted to pass a referendum question, we would need to call a special meeting because the second meeting in January is after the January, January 21st deadline to pass a question at a public meeting that would need to go on the ballot on April 1st. So again, just a reminder of the context of timeline. I mentioned that at our last meeting, but just to give you a frame of reference where kind of the, the scope of tonight's meeting is going to be important, just within that timeline as we're moving forward. So, so with that, I'll hand it over to Julie.
Right. Well, thank you. So last, last board meeting, we had gone through the key takeaways from community feedback and had put that together. We also reviewed that at Facilities and Finance. And we also took feedback from board members and other community member feedback that's come in to help us to continue to refine the scope and what we're going to present to you tonight. But to recap, we really felt like in our community sessions, there was support for facilities upstates. The community is receptive, but needing more information about the 4K Center. And so we've been actively pursuing and making sure that we're having conversations and getting that information that's being asked so that everybody has a clear picture and understanding. The phased approach and financing strategy seems to resonate. Majority support to continue to explore a new South Park solution. So you're going to see that in here. Also, to continue to explore Oakwood Solution, we took that feedback as well, and you will see some changes and refinement based on that. And then explore options for improvements at Reed, E. Cook, and Lakeside. And so specifically adding air conditioning to these buildings. Because one of the pieces with community feedback we've been hearing, or we've been getting questions on, is how are, how is updating facilities, how is building something new actually impacting learning? And what we were really hearing from Reed, E. Cook, Lakeside, and schools that do not have like, let's say, like air conditioning that controls the environment, they're telling us, and the families are telling us, that it does impact learning, that these learning spaces do matter by having those cooling and controlled environments. So that's like one area why that learning environment and facilities do matter. Then making sure that we're communicating plans for staffing transitions as we, as we implement. And we've been in that, in those conversations and updating processes for that, and continue to understand the successes and lessons learned from Phase One, the transition, efficiencies gained, and benefits to students and staff. And we will talk more about some of that planning that is going on with that. So based on that feedback and looking at all the information, this is what we are now presenting as the scope summary for, for Phase Two. This is what the refinement looks like. Highlighted in green is what the areas that have been updated or have been refined based on feedback. So first off, in the West Side Middle School consolidation area, we are recommending to construct a new middle school on the South Park site. So that was coming through in our feedback. We also got in feedback that to repurpose Perry-Tipler Middle School to house all of our alternative school sites and the RAC Department offices. So making sure that we are really utilizing that space in Tipler. I do want to clarify that this does not mean moving the Riverside Program from Fox Valley Technical College. That is a Fox Valley Technical College partnership, and it will stay at the Riverside campus of Fox Valley Tech in Oshkosh. But all of our other alternative school sites, we are recommending to move into the Perry-Tipler Middle School. Then, under co-curricular or curricular facilities, these are remaining the same. So build North High School Auditorium and close and seek to sell the downtown RAC Center building, moving into Tipler. One thing that is new, and once again, based totally on, on feedback, is facilities improvements, and that is the addition, addition of air conditioning at E. Cook, Lakeside, and Reed Elementary Schools. So that's added now into the scope. And then our West Side Elementary Consolidation, the actual overall plan is the same, but we have made refinements to the actual footprints in the plans and that, which we will see in a moment. But to recap, we're going to close and seek to sell Roosevelt Elementary. That's proposed. Expand Oakwood to a four-track schools, which means four grade levels or four classrooms at each grade level to accommodate 600 students. Expand Carl Traeger to accommodate 600 students, four-track. Expand Franklin, 600 students, four-track. Convert Shapiro STEM Academy to the Oshkosh area School District Pre-Kindergarten Center, or the name that we're going to have for that particular learning environment. And then we would be eliminating leases for non-district locations for pre-K and alternative school programs because those would go into Perry-Tipler Middle School. So with that, this is a graphic representation of the West Side Elementary School consolidation. So Roosevelt, we would close and seek to sell. And then you could see that would be three elementary, expanded elementary school sites, and the Shapiro site being converted into a pre-K center. And so with this, this is the plan for Traeger Elementary School. And this would be adding a four-classroom pod onto the Traeger Elementary School. And this would be the addition and would accommodate four tracks within Traeger Elementary School. In addition, we have been doing some work to make sure that within the scope of that addition, we can be addressing traffic and other pieces that have come up in community feedback sessions at Traeger as well. The next one is Franklin Elementary School. And so there have been essentially no revisions to this conceptual plan for Franklin Elementary School. So it would be looking at the additions, then light and heavy renovation to once again ensure that our buildings that we are renovating are going to be, look like a cohesive learning environment. The next one is Oakwood Elementary School, and this is the one that has had the most revisions. And if I could ask Nate to talk more about what those revisions are based on feedback from our community.
Yes. Good evening. The few of the requests from the feedback sessions and the revisions associated is that this is a bit of a sprawling campus as it is. And so trying to look to kind of condense that footprint further down to, you know, really kind of, kind of combine that student experience from not having to travel through even further of the building. So although it is faint on the right side of your graphic, you can see a dashed line that extends further up past the red addition. That was the prior iteration of the floor plan, which was a single-story solution. The, the big change is obviously incorporating a second, second floor and then reutilizing more of the existing facilities specifically to house the student services and administrative offices. We still are, one of the comments throughout this process is that the admin being where it is can feel a little bit off as an island. So we are still gearing up to have a bit of a central So we are still gearing up to have a bit of a central hub for an assistant principal or just a spot so that students on the far end of the building don't have to trip across the entire piece. So, you know, we're really focused on consolidating and really being efficient with our footprint, but also making sure that the student experience from a learning environment and equity environment of accessing administration is, is, is a key.
The second one is the pre-kindergarten center or consolidating in a 4K center. And the overall plan or the renovations hasn't changed. But we have ensured that number one, that within the project, there include some improvements and definitely consideration for bus drop-off, parking, circulation of traffic, knowing with those pieces. But one thing that's come up within the community quite a bit is really understanding like how busing would work. So currently approximately 51% of students in our 4K program are bused. And so what is that actually going to look like? And is this going to actually cause students to increase the time that they're on bus, in transportation or on buses, et cetera? So what we've done is we have mapped out our current student bus routes and the placements at 4K sites. And what we, what we found out is, what it revealed is that we're currently busing the majority of our North Side students because this has come up. Why would Shapiro, why would we choose the Shapiro site versus some, June, I'm seeing some other site? And so the majority of our North Side students are already being bused to West Side 4K locations. And so that's what we discovered in those pieces. Like we said, 51% of students are currently bused. And Mr. Nihans and myself, along with Kobassan, we worked on what would this look like with increasing number of routes and if we were going to actually do this. So currently there are 16 routes in the morning and 18 routes in the afternoon. And so with our work with Kobassan and with our 4K staff, we are predicting this will increase to 24 to 26 routes in the AM and PM. So once again, that's where we have to make sure that we have busing, drop-off, and locations, et cetera. There will be an increase in busing routes, but we feel confident that's going to be offset with our operational savings and our overall pieces of that. And then as we started working on this is that we are pretty confident that bus routes will not be any longer than students are currently on their bus routes going to a pre-K center. And so once again, this, we will have consistency in times with that. So we are continuing to have conversations, but that's what our preliminary discussions and research that the community has asked us to look into has revealed with our 4K, with our 4K sites. So the overall plan here is the same for the actual facilities, but we still have work to do, to work on all the pieces that come together for transitioning into one building. The second piece of here with the co-curriculars is the North High School auditorium. And really this has stayed the same based on what was presented in community feedback sessions. And so then if we go to the West Side Middle School consolidation, we have three middle schools. Tipler Middle School will be split, not evenly. It'll be based on boundaries and number of students between Traeger Middle and New Middle School on the South Park site. And so as we take a look at this, this is what the new middle school on the South Park site is. And Nate or Clint, I don't know if you want to talk through where this landed and what this looks like?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So the strategy behind this building, some may wonder why the shape and why, why kind of the, you know, layout. Really the goal was to keep the existing South Park site operational while construction could occur. So to accommodate that, we do feel like the, if you're familiar with the old pool, that is now a multipurpose room that was built in quite a few years ago, that that portion of the building could be safely demolished to allow for construction. And then working with the parcels that the school district currently owns, as well as, you know, working with the current geometries of Highway 44 in Florida creates some interesting dynamics. There's also a city requirement of maximum impervious ratio of 60%. So between the city requirements, the layout of the existing building, and then trying to keep the school operational while it's being built, leaves us with an articulated shape to not only reflect the learning environments that are not necessarily duplicated from Bell Phillips, but I think captured from what the efficiencies were and trying to bring that forward, but then also respond to some of the pieces that needed to be adjusted from Bell Phillips, as well as operational needs from garbage and food service delivery and so forth. The, the, if actually, sorry.
You actually go back again?
Yeah, real quick. The goal would be is to construct the middle school initially and then there'd be a temporary portion where the building would be then torn down, most likely underneath the same contract, so that the contractor that built the building could then put up the parking lot and the additional green space that the city will require. That whole lot is really looked at from that 60% impervious ratio. So go ahead.
And also just a reminder that much like Bell Phillips and Menominee, there's a lengthy design period. So while sometimes when we draw things in computer, it looks very final and definitive, this is again very preliminary and, and again, the idea at the moment that we think responds and solves the site and responds to the challenges and needs that the district has kind of given to us in terms of what, what should be made up of a middle school.
To the point, you can see just schematic boxes when you look at the preliminary floor plans. This would be a three-story building, very similar to Bell Phillips, where there would hypothetically be three separate academic areas that could split up sixth, seventh, and eighth grade levels. And then trying to stack appropriate spaces above one another, whether it is a communal space or primarily a classroom setup.
Can I ask a quick question? So does this move the drop-off and pickup location to Florida and Delaware?
Delaware is the, yes. So the intent would be is that you would come in kind of a third of the way up on Delaware and then there'd be a one-way loop that would bring you down to Florida. So we're having students drop off on the right side of the view.
That will make a huge difference in terms of safety for our students because having it where it is right now is always so congested. So I'm happy to see that. Thank you.
And again, it's similar to very much of these being schematic. Having worked quite a bit with the city over the past few years, we feel like we have a really good spot on this, but all of this is still subject to city approval as well.
So that would outline the scope and the scope refinements. So then the question is, is what is the financial impact? So on the slide that was included in your, in your packet, on the left-hand side, we have the original itemized project cost list that we had put out and we were showing at community feedback sessions. And over on the right-hand side is the revised itemized project cost list. You'll notice that it's a little bit more detailed because now we have some refinement when it comes to the, the scope of each of the project with some more details with that. And you will also see that air conditioning at E. Cook, Lakeside, and Reed has been added in here. So that has taken the total package where we had said the 195 million, has taken this to 198.6. And so currently, we believe that we can still honor the zero impact, zero tax increase to taxpayers within this. So putting this all together, items from the listening sessions, new middle school on the South Park site. In summary, the revised Oakwood elementary plan, the addition of AC at Reed, E. Cook, and Lakeside Elementary Schools. And then we once again also made sure that within the site budgets, we did some increases where enrollment is increasing to support coordination with the City of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, and the Town of Algoa to make sure that we are addressing traffic, traffic conditions. Because once again, that also came up loud and clear in community feedback sessions that we need to be proactively planning for those things. And so those are taken into consideration within the site budgets. So you will see some refinement in there as well. So then this is a recap of what if Phase 2 is, is not completed. And this is, once again, we, we need the approval of the board going forward. But what we're seeing here is with consolidation, student, without consolidation, students will have less access to full-time staff members across the district. We want to make sure that we do not get into an emergency situation with South Park and making sure that we keep the learning environment up and running for them. Shapiro will still close because we are looking at their enrollment and we, we can still consolidate into a pre-K center. It would not be renovated, but that is, that is a possibility and we can do that. Additional annual operational savings will not be captured. Capital maintenance costs will continue to grow because there are absolutely needs that are going to be addressed within the renovations and in the new builds. And then we also know that over time, construction costs will continue to increase. And the numbers that you have at the bottom of this slide look different than when we presented at the last board meeting because these numbers have been updated based on the refined financial impact or the refined scope that you can see in there. So once again, our four key takeaways, as you heard in here, is we are continuing to increase student achievement. Student achievement is up and we do believe that learning spaces do matter when it comes to student achievement. Our tax levy is down by over 5%. We're consolidating to make sure that we are meeting our, our current students and our future students' needs and we are tracking to have 1,000 less students. And zero increase to taxpayers. We can do that with the 198.6 million package. So where are we, where are we in the full facilities plan? We are in the very last step of the refinement of the Phase 2 project and scope. And we are going to be turning it over to the board to make their decision.
I'd like to hear from all board members tonight. I think it's important at this stage that everyone gets a voice and certainly if there's any questions that can be answered that would help make up your mind. Okay? Mrs. Carolyn?
So my initial feedback is, I have, there's a lot of things I see on here that I like. I'm really happy to see the RAC Center closing. I think that that building has so many mobility issues. You have half floors, it's old, it needs more than $5 million in repair. I think that that's the first thing that kind of stands out. Franklin, the addition, if you haven't been in Franklin, you might not know that there's all that space back there, but I think that makes sense also. That's an anchor school. There's plenty of room to add on to it. I did have a question about Oakwood. And I'm not surprised that Oakwood has created a lot of debate because if I recall correctly, Oakwood is one of those schools that I think it has four additions. You have the main building, an addition, another addition, another addition. So my question is, is it, are we being economically wise in renovating? Because sometimes it is cheaper just to tear down and start over. So that's my first question on that.
Yeah, I would, with that one, I would, again, I would really go back and as we look and analyze the existing building, the, probably the two areas were most impacting are, if you want to go back to that one.
Go back to what?
The two areas were most impacting are the, one of the newer sections. I think that's kind of the 1990s where the cafeteria is in. And then the section to the south of the addition where the existing Oakwood footprint. And again, I think in both of those, to your point, is it better to tear down and rebuild? And I think in, in the case of both of those, the space that's there is, is really good space. As a comparative, the, the leg that sticks to the, goes to the west or to the left is almost the same size as the learning environments. We just built that Menominee and that we would be planning to build here. So we don't, there's not significant structural modifications, you know, we're not sacrificing space or fit or finish or quantity of spaces and reutilizing that. Similarly with what we're planning to do within the, kind of the open concept area, the more southern wing of that as well. The space is really good space and, and we feel, again, the construction type that the building was built under and so forth, there's, there's life left in that.
It's worth.
Yeah, that there's worth, worth continuing. Again, I, I can't dispute it's maybe not in the best spot on the site. I can't dispute, you know, if we, if we were to build it somewhere else, it might be better for some of those neighbors in terms of placement and proximity to their houses. I can't, I certainly can't dispute that.
But you consider it. You did consider every option.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think, again, maybe we get criticized for some of the other buildings we're suggesting we tear down. We really do believe there is value in maintaining these and continuing and, and then ultimately that it does, it is reflected in the savings to the overall budget for the project as well. So we think, again, this is a good, good use of taxpayer money to do the project in this manner.
And I am 110% convinced that South Park needs to be just completely, there's, there's one elevator, I've already given my speech about how students that are in wheelchairs cannot get, or even on crutches cannot get around that school. I'm also happy to see that we've listened to some parents and added air conditioning into this package. I know that on the last referendum cycle, a lot of other school districts added air conditioning to their buildings. So I think that that is appropriate as well. My only wondering is, why do you think that Shapiro has so many questions regarding the pre-K consolidation? Because as a parent, I think I would have loved that. My, I lived on the south side and my kid, my kids went to the Y for pre-K and that, that was a heck of a drive. It's a central location, we're working on all the bus routes. I'm having a hard time understanding why people are not 100% on board with it.
So I think there's, there's many different factors that we've been talking in and that we have for a very long time had our 4K, pre-K learning environments have been with community partner sites. And that's like, things have shifted over time and so we are looking, a lot of our community members are looking at 4K the way it may have been like 10 years ago, 12 years ago, et cetera. So we, we have learned much. We have fabulous staff within our school district that have a vision for what education could look like for our earliest learners. And so also when you have families that are, their very first child's coming into the school district, this is their first interaction with that, and you have many questions because it's your child that's coming into an educational and learning environment. So yes, I, I'm not surprised at all the questions because it is doing something differently. And that also families are anxious when they first start their school journey with their child is they want to be part of a school community. So what does that, what does that look like when you have 4K sites all over the place and that may not be the elementary school that you're going to? So there's, there's just so many questions because everybody's familiar with K through five or six through 12, but not with what a actual 4K center. So that is part of our, part of our work coming up is really like educating and answering all those questions so that our community knows that we have really thought through 4K.
That's a great answer, actually. And we're going to save so much money not having to pay to lease, having preschool at the YMCA or Peace Christian or all these other buildings. It's huge cost savings for us. So I think that makes sense. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Anyone like to go next? Dr. Herzog?
Thank you, Mrs. Wyler. Excuse me. It was, I believe, in the 2019, 2020 school year when the board asked administration to put together a long-range facilities plan. We had received an analysis, I believe it was in the fall of 2017, from Bray and Associates on things like tuck pointing and roofs and structural, mainly external structural issues with our, with our, all of our buildings collectively. And that figure was somewhere north of 100 million. But it did not address anything relative to student learning. We know that our student demographics are changing. We know that not only... We know that not only are the demographics changing, but students today are exposed to all kinds of social media and visual learning options that were not available when these schools were built in the 1950s, 60s, and so on. So I do think it's important to revise our learning spaces for students. And I, and I believe that, from what I've seen at both Val Phillips and Menominee Elementary School, there was a lot of foresight in the planning and design of, design of those buildings. And I know that it was either Mr. Considine or Mr. Sell who told me that we don't know what education is going to look like in 40 years. But we know pretty much what it looks like now. And so there are some spaces in both of those buildings to allow us to grow and to be flexible and resilient with our spaces moving forward. Excuse me, I really like the idea of the orchestra pit and storage at North High School. I've been to a number of plays and concerts, particularly band concerts at North. From what the music staff have told me, there's not enough depth on the stage to accommodate larger groups or certain plays that the drama department would like to provide. Excuse me, I attended five of the listening sessions. And for four of them, the groups, I thought, were very reflective and very supportive of the plan and didn't have a lot of questions. That was different at Oakwood. There were a lot of concerns expressed about this big footprint that was being defined. So my wondering on that is, have the Oakwood staff or PTO been involved or informed about this proposal to go to a two-story and a smaller footprint on that site?
Yes, we have been communicating with it. And I can tell you, I personally have been communicating with individuals who have been emailing and calling and asking about revisions to that, to that Oakwood site. And so, yes, we said that you will see the revisions that are coming out in the board packet. And we've been, I have been personally talking to individuals that have called and emailed about those revisions.
Okay. This Phase Two, excuse me, follows very closely the initial four-phase plan that the board adopted, I think it was in January of 2020. Does that sound right, Julie?
Yeah, that sounds right.
That did not provide for the North High orchestra pit and storage. However, the Facilities Advisory Committee 2.0, which looked at various facilities, recommended that. And it didn't provide for the air conditioning. But conditions change. And it's important to be able to revise our plans accordingly. So I like what I see here. I think it makes sense to, I think it always makes sense, to be fiscally responsible. And at the same time, our, our main focus is student learning. And I think you've addressed ways we can improve student learning in these buildings, the way students learn, the nature of our students, the changing demographics. I don't see that waiting to ask our community to support this will save any money. And in the long run, it'll cost us more. Just as, there's someone in my neighborhood whose roof looks really rough. Waiting is probably not going to result in a lower cost for that roof, just like car expenses. You can put off car expenses so long, but they often find other things wrong. And so it, it costs you more in the long run. So I support this for the reasons I've stated. I believe it addresses student learning issues, the changing demographics of our students. And I think it's fiscally responsible to do something sooner rather than later before we have a crisis. So thank you all for your work.
Mr. Wright?
I've had a lot of thoughts about this for a long time because it's a big thing. I think it's a defining moment in our community, really. And my thoughts while I was sitting up here and thinking, they go way back to when my kids, my oldest child started elementary school at Oakwood. And I'm not surprised you got a lot of questions from Oakwood because I'm connected in that community. And everything we do around Oakwood School has a lot of questions. But my daughter went there and her, the classes were partitioned in the library by partitions. That was, that's the walls. That's still the walls there today. Not, it's not by any means a modern school or probably one of the greatest learning spaces. And I thought to myself when I walked in Oakwood School, I'm like, boy, this must be, you know, this is probably one of our older schools. You know what I mean? And nope. You know, it's not even close to as old as South Park. And, well, I'm looking at the pros and cons of a plan. Okay? I wrote a couple of things down. Yes, this plan is a lot of money, right? But this plan is addressing a lot, a lot of years of us not doing much in this community to meet our, or address our facility needs. I mean, this is not, this is decades upon decades of us not addressing our facility needs. When I'm out in the community, people aren't telling me that this isn't the right thing to do, or that this thing, that this doesn't happen eventually. Mostly, they're saying, we'd like the high school first, maybe. But we know we need to do this because this is decades and decades of us pushing off facility needs. So thankfully, we're able to do this without raising the tax, tax levy, right? We can keep the mill rate the same. Okay? We can start recognizing cost savings because of the consolidation. We can get rid of millions and millions of dollars of deferred maintenance costs. Millions and millions of dollars of deferred maintenance costs. Now, what, what would be the cons to doing those things? Okay? I hear people against this because of the dollar amount, right? But I don't hear people with any solutions, right? If we don't take these steps forward, what, what are we going to do eventually? Are we just going to do what we did in the past? You know, maybe South Park can become 130 or 50 years old before we address the issues. You know, maybe let's let Oakwood become 100 years old. This is a concise plan. The dollar amounts to fix these costs will increase. This has been figured out in a fiscally responsible way. This will help our neighborhoods. This will help our community grow. And obviously, it's going to go up a little bit because of the air conditioning. But those schools deserve air conditioning? I mean, I was with a couple of business leaders. And they are going to, recently, and they are going to absolutely vocally, vocally support this proposal. And we're at kids' practices. And they're like, this makes absolute business sense. Find me a business person, find me a community person that would look at this and say that this plan doesn't make sense, that this plan isn't going to push the community forward. The flip side, I was with, if anyone hasn't had the chance, they should talk to some South Park teachers about teaching in the third floor of South Park during this September. If you're questioning this plan and the need for us to update that facility, you should really just go and do that. And you should maybe talk to some of the kids and the families. And then you should come and tell us that we shouldn't do this because it's not going to better the learning environment for the children in our community. So I absolutely support this. I ran on, ran on an election a year ago and I said I was going to support this. And I fully intend to do that. And I hope that the community will support this as well because it just makes sense. Pushing problems aside and delaying them is something we've done in this community for a long time. Why don't we be proactive for once? Right? Why don't we build our community out in a proactive way with, with schools that are efficient and save costs? So that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Mrs. Milknick?
I think I've been pretty vocal along about what I was hoping for and where we're, and I am pleased with the response and the administration's willingness to answer my many questions and to work with me and to the people, work with people that have given me feedback on this as well. I think this is an incredibly fiscally responsible plan. And to be able to do this without increasing the tax levy for our constituents is important. And I think, I appreciate that we have had very smart budgeting to make that happen. And that's the kind of thing that, you have to always look at both your short-term needs and your long-term goals and the needs of the district. Our kids need appropriate facilities that aren't going to fall apart. So, and I think it's also important, it is an efficient, efficiency-based concept. I do always, though, go back to the idea that we have to prioritize our students first for all this. And we have to make sure we are getting this right. So I am not so concerned about the dollar amount. I think that we've done very good planning with that. I'm still very concerned and will continue to push that we keep answering the questions and that we keep prioritizing the concerns that, that people have and that we make sure that we don't make some of the same problem, or errors that we made in the past. But talking to specific of this, I've had the honor of going into, I think the majority of these schools that are impacted by this over the last couple of weeks and months. South Park is one of my assigned schools. And it's a, it's a nice old building. But it is also a very old building. And it's, more importantly, it's a very good and thriving school community. And that's what we need to preserve, not the physical structure. The fact that the windows do not open in that building is a problem. It is, as Chris mentioned, be on the third floor, be on the first floor. It is not a safe learning environment. And it is not something that we can expect that our kids are going to excel in right now. I think we need to address that. And I also hope we are able to do that by consolidating it in a very positive way to maintain the positives of both Perry Tippler and South Park. I do, much of my work over the last couple of months has been working with early learning. And to Stephanie's question, there are a lot of questions out there. And I think the most important thing for me, though, related to their learning center, is that it's really time to prioritize our earliest learners. This is their first introduction to not only to school, but to our school district. And we can't just have them be an afterthought anymore. There's a, there are a lot of misconceptions out there about how things are currently working, that it's great that these kids are in various schools, but there is no school home right now. They are kind of put wherever there is space. And unfortunately, we are already sending kids on long bus rides across the district. The staff is ready and excited to have a school family where they all can work together and better, you know, jump in to help out when something's happening, or shift students within classrooms. You can't do that right now. I do think, though, and I appreciate that Beth Shandell will be leading this, that we do need to continue to work out and partner with our early learning sites and our childhood, childcare sites around the district. We, our, our community is not in a great place right now. And we need to figure out how we can engage more of our younger families and get them to be able to come and enjoy this facility. I also am very concerned if we don't pass this referendum and the idea of putting these kids, these four-year-olds into Shapiro without renovations is, that's something that I really don't want to deal with without walls for a bunch of four-year-olds. But as, as 4K and early learning has always done, they would make it work. I also think it's important that, with, to have the addition at E. Cook, Lakeside, and Reed to have air conditioning. This is something we heard very loud and clear. And I can tell you from personal experience that it impacts learning environments. And they literally cannot learn in those days, just like those kids at South Parks. And guess what? That's happening, you know, for at least the first month or two of the school year. My final thoughts are related to Oakwood and, you know, the fact that, you know, Oakwood cultural program in Franklin will all change. And I do appreciate that, that a lot of thought has been given in to make them the best possible. But I think that, Oakwood especially, I hope, I'm glad that, that we've listened and tried. I took the truck with the four-year-olds from the back door of Oakwood to basically the front door because that's where they get dropped off. It takes 10 minutes to walk these four-year-olds across the building. And I think we need to help make a learning, a modern learning environment there as well. So I, I will be voting to, I like the scope. I like the, I like how we have structured the, the cost of this. And I hope, though, that we will continue to emphasize prioritizing learning environments throughout all of this. That's where my view, our effort needs to be.
Thank you. Dr. House?
I got a few questions. First, I wonder, and if we're not perfectly accurate about this, I'm totally good with that. Just when I saw today, again, I think you presented the elementary enrollments. Can you suggest what the remaining South Park and Trager presently are and what they would be at the end of this? Or did I just miss it?
I was going to say, I don't know if I had this on here.
I don't know that I saw that.
I think it was just the elementary.
Oh, it was just the elementary.
I think it just had the elementary on there. That's what spurred me.
So I can talk, I can't give you the exact numbers, but I can talk in tracks, if that makes sense, like how many classroom, how many homerooms at each grade level. Hopefully, that'll make sense as a concept. So currently, at Tippler with Alps, there's five, there's five homerooms at each grade level. And then, at South Park, there's a, I think it's five, four, five tracks. And then, over at Trager, they're currently between five and six. What this will, what this will make is that at Trager, Trager has the capacity, because we've used a lot of other rooms in Trager for other things than classrooms. But it would be seven, seven tracks, so seven classrooms, seven homerooms at each grade level. And then, South Park would be eight. I don't, I don't know if that helps you.
I get it.
Yeah. And so like, if you divide that up, so there's some consolidation, but it also accommodates, if you think about it, it should mirror what you go over into West High School when it comes to like tracks or core academic classes at West High School per grade level.
Sure. I'm assuming I'm going to you gentlemen. How did we estimate the cost of these various things? At this stage, I mean, I get that right now, you primarily got rough ideas of what's going where, but.
Yes. So do you want?
Sure. So we obviously have a great resource in terms of both the elementary need and the middle school need, using Menominee and Val Phillips as our comparison. So we generally start off with a program, which then we then interlay that into the, the solutions that we created. So while we do have a floor plan for, for the South Park project, kind of the square footage, I would say that we're relying on is probably way more apt to the program. Again, that was created kind of from the, from the Val Phillips model. We're using our, our current data as far as what we're seeing for market conditions for construction costs. So we have, we're very fortunate, we are actively working on a number of current middle school projects that are going into referendum either in April or just past referendum in November. We also have several element, our middle school projects that are, have just bid either in November, December, and I think just those two months, as well as also looking at elementary schools, high schools, and some of our other work that, that is bidding in this time. So we're doing our best to have kind of a pulse on the, the current conditions of what market costs are, both new construction, addition, and so forth. And then, we're, again, utilizing some inflation factors of 5% per year. And then, utilizing our schedule to understand when we think each of these projects are going to be bid. So yes, you're indeed correct. They are estimates. You know, God forbid, we have a similar COVID-type inflation increase. But if I was also going to sit here and tell you, we have 20% of inflation in the budgets right now, I think that would be a hard thing for us to try to sell to you guys because that's just not, you know, what we expect to see in the market at this particular time. But again, it's, it's a combination of seeing what current conditions are, seeing what we're forecasting for our, some of our projects in the short term, and then utilizing that data to understand what we think that'll forecast out several years from now.
If I can add on to that, the historical data that Clint references, you know, we work with outside engineering firms, we work with outside work with outside engineering firms, we work with outside construction partners in different aspects, so we really have a great deal of data to pull from and we're, we're getting consulted budgets and cross-checking that with our own and it's really a, it's a kind of a cross-checking matrix to come forward with you guys to a budget that is, that we feel comfortable in.
I mean, I think I, if we're putting something forward, I want to put something forward that's going to pass and I think we talked a little bit at Facilities and Finance about some of the feedback kind of things and I really tried to go ahead out and get a bunch of people and apparently, Chris, you and I don't intersect with the same people because I've heard substantially different things and, and a lot of it is revolving around the overall cost and the impact. And so one thing that, that I'm kind of curious about here is in this particular setting, I understand why we're adding air conditioning and that was $5.8 million. And so I'm trying to understand then, okay, we added 5.8, but then we ended up cutting some things and so I'm kind of curious about the, the slide that shows the financial impact. Can we talk a little bit about, you know, the, the new middle school at South Park? We were originally saying 90 million, we've now dropped, what, 1.7 million? Did we have to cut something to do that or was that just refinement of estimates or what, what, what did we do to achieve that?
Yeah, again, it was a bit of refinement of estimates additionally, when some of the estimates were initially created, we kind of rounded up or down some of those numbers. So those actually weren't always a specific reflection of, of the number that we were carrying. So, so it was a bit of a combination of, of both of those things, again, adjusting some of the market conditions that we're seeing and then again, pinpointing that a little bit more specific numbers that we were seeing within the budgets.
I think one of the things that I tried to get feedback that was constructive and there was a bunch of it that was just, it wasn't constructive. But one of the things that, that I heard a number of times was, to some extent, it feels like Val Phillips and Menominee might have been a little too nice. And is there a way to, to cut things back in terms of, like you could look at Val Phillips and say, you walk into the gymnasium to a two-story entryway with a double curtain wall of glass and those are extravagant sort of things that aren't necessarily needed, you know? Is there any room here for South Park and I'm kind of looking at the biggest item to cut that or is 88.3 million, we need that? At the same time, I don't want to run into what happened with Val Phillips where all of a sudden we were, what, 4.8 million over budget and now we had to go do things. So I understand, I'm talking both sides here, but I feel like a lot of the people that are struggling with the overall cost of this are wondering, are there ways to make something that is more, not necessarily, we don't need all the bells and whistles, but we just want the functionality of it per se?
I mean, I would say absolutely. We, we were very mindful about, I think longevity of materials within that building. So I'll, you know, the flooring to eliminate the need for stripping and waxing, so there's rubber flooring, there's terrazzo flooring in the building. I think any building owner or somebody that works or maintains a building, if, if you can get terrazzo flooring, it's going to last, stand the test of time. So there were certainly things I think we, we put in that building, you know, appreciate, I think people see the grand, grandiose things maybe or perception of some of the grandiose things, but I would say probably over the course of an entire floor plan, you know, the flooring, you could, you could probably say even a reduction of $5 per square foot over the course of that entire, you know, footprint of that building at, you know, roughly 200,000 square feet. And I'm kind of arbitrarily making up a number, that's almost a million dollars. So again, if you, if you would pick and choose, but then on the other end of that, what are we sacrificing for the long term? Are we replacing that floor in, in 20 years or is the terrazzo, as expected, is likely gonna last the lifetime of that facility? So I think there's, there's those trade-offs. Certainly we can try to provide less glass, we can bring down the height of things, we can try to find some of the ways, but I'll just speak to that atrium, for example. The height of that was somewhat dictated by the nearby music rooms and then the intersection into the gym. So if we would have kind of, you know, dropped and sort of played with some of the, the shapes and forms of that, it may have saved some costs, but it would have also added some transitions of roofing and what, it might have actually added, added some degree of costs or, or, yeah, or, or changed and simplified it. Again, not trying to justify that necessarily, but some of those decisions were related to what was nearer next to some of those areas of the building. But, but yeah, I mean, I think that's a decision we make with the district. I, to your point, I would, I, I'm scared in, in the future market and whatever the conditions are to, to pinch now because yes, you're going to feel that later and you're gonna say, well, you know, we, we could have used that extra amount of money. So I think giving the, the district the flexibility to make some of those decisions if, if we can afford better fit and finish now, which will lead to savings in the long run or, or the building again lasting, I think what the expectation is in Ashkosh that we want this to be a 100-year-old building.
I mean, I, I think if we had all the money, obviously happily do this. I get it. I get the argument that it's not going to cost anything more, I understand that, but I think people are going to turn around and you can look at your property tax bill and immediately understand what you're talking about here. I, myself, am not utterly convinced of this, but I'm of the opinion that whenever it is, whenever we can ask a question of the community, which a referendum is one of those things, I feel like that's our obligation is to let the community decide on this. So, you know, I understand the work that has gone into this, I understand what we've proposed here, it does make sense to me. I just, I struggle with how many people are struggling financially and could we give them a break? And I, you know, when we've dealt with budgets, I've said that every time. So it's the same thing. I think my, my one ask in this particular case is I just don't want to make the same mistake that, that I feel like we kind of made with Merrill. I hope that the language here is very definitive, that we tell the community, this is what we're doing with South Park here.
Yes.
I don't want to get into that again, so.
No, I appreciate that and that'll, that'll be something that we'll clarify and then we'll bring that draft back in the next, at the next meeting, just to, to look at that. So.
But that's, those are my comments.
Thank you very much. I have six points and I don't want to reiterate what other people have said, but these are my highlights. Number one, I think the 4K center is huge. We continue to talk about literacy, we continue to talk about early learning and I don't know how we bring in all these kindergartners right now from all over with various backgrounds, various levels of learning. It's one of the biggest things we can do for this district is to bring in all of our 4Kers into one location with experts so we understand where all of our kids are and we can help them get to kindergarten in a better place. Number two, the Northside Auditorium, I think would be fantastic, not just for the Northside Auditorium, but because we have a real deficiency in auditorium space right now. When we have kids that have canceled Christmas concerts or we have to have them in April, I just talked to a lady, she said, I don't want my child's Christmas concert in April, I want it in December. The North Auditorium gives us the opportunity to do that. Not only that, we talk about, we talked tonight about extracurriculars. For many kids who are not, don't necessarily do well academically, music is a way to keep them in school, is to have them grow friendships and be part of a team, be part of a big group. I've always been a proponent of music, I insisted my kids were in music in some form or another and that's one thing that we can do for North with the three most wonderful music professionals that a district could have. West has them too, but North has some really, really good ones. Number three, I like that we are able to accommodate the whole district, we have needs in different areas of the district and I like that we looked at the district as a whole. Number four, I think this is a wise use of taxpayer money and I like this plan because we can kick it down the road, but then taxes will go up and then they'll come down and then they'll go up and then they'll go down. This provides a consistent approach for our taxpayers that everyone can count on. Number five, I think since I have been with this district, we have the best group of principals that we have ever, ever had as far as a leadership style and there's a lot of buildings that are going to be affected by this and I believe that we have the right building leaders in place to be able to do this. And number six, I would be very proud as a board member to bring this to the community as a referendum to vote on. Tim's right, ultimately it is our community that would decide on this, but I would be very, very proud to be part of the board that brings it to our community. That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. So to, to wrap things up, I'm hearing some support for the, the current scope with the caveat that Tim had mentioned related to just definitively talking about the demolition of South Park to make sure that that's part of that. So we can work with, Corals and Brady is, is our counsel who works on that question. So Drew and I will work with them to be able to bring you back a question on December 18th for, for review and then the plan then would be to get that approved on January 8th at our beaming to be on the ballot for April 1st. It sounds like the direction we're headed, so.
One specific suggestion I have, I would even right away to Corals, try to give them better guidance on wording for the all alternative sites wording, school sites wording, since Riverside is not and there, yeah, so that one in particular, I was, I made a couple of comments on it, all, maybe it's all effective alternative school sites, but somehow spelled it out separately.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great discussion, great board input.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent resolution. Thank you for coming tonight, gentlemen. Consent resolution for consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material and you've had, we've been discussing previous meetings, these will be act found with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any, we pulled out the consent agenda and voted on separately. We have done that already. Okay. Motion, so wait a second. Right, Carolyn. Call them please.
Hi.
Hi.
Smutley.
Hi.
Ray.
Wyman.
Hi.
Carolyn.
Hi.
Resilience carries.
Next we have number 11, English for speakers of other languages, program plan. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Herzak, Carolyn, discussion.
Good evening to the board. Once each year, we have the pleasure of sharing updates with the board and our community about our programming to support students who receive ESOL services. We are fortunate to have more than 7% of students in our district who are both linguistically and culturally diverse, being that English may be their second, third or fourth language. So these are extremely brilliant and intelligent students that are serviced through our programming. We know that we have a duty and an obligation to go above and beyond to make sure that students serviced by our ESOL program have the academic and social support to thrive, connect and experience the greatness of our district and our community. Last March, Stephanie McKenzie transitioned from serving as an ESOL teacher at Val Phillips Middle School to her current role as the ESOL program coordinator for our district. Stephanie, along with the extremely talented and dedicated pair of professionals, teachers and mentors, worked diligently to serve our students and partner with their families to provide high-quality programming and support during the school year, over the breaks, the evenings, before school and even during the summer. You had an opportunity to receive the ESOL program plan and the staff report. I'll turn it over to Stephanie and then we'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Good evening, board. You may notice that there are no major revisions when compared to the program plan approved in November of 2023. DPI is updating their EL policy handbook in 2025 and we may see larger revisions then, but currently our processes are, are mostly the same. Things that may have changed are on page one, our updated ELP data, so our English language proficiency. So our list of languages is now at 67. This shows our EL population by their proficiency level and our growing staff population. We included notes about professional development. We are highly enjoying the ICS equity modules and the co-plan to co-serv model is coming. For our translators and interpreters, we added some digital resources to try to take some of that load off our bilingual pair of professionals. There's an app called Talking Point where you send a text message in English and it shows up on the family's phone in Arabic or Swahili that we're trying to increase usage. We are looking into Tard Jim Lee where it connects you to an interpreter in real time. And then lastly, the most prominent and important item I want to note is our increasing numbers of students of refugee background. So our current presidential administration increased the refugee ceiling to 125,000 these past few years and because of that, we've been, we've experienced a really large increase of students and families of refugee background. For some reason, they really enjoy Ashkosh, it may be the university, it may be how inviting or just our school district in general.
It's the school district.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be, you know, all our teachers. And because of that, in the Fox Cities, especially Ashkosh, our numbers have grown. So you may have noticed in our program plan, our students of refugee numbers last year were around 661. When I updated the plan in November, our numbers were at 797. This morning I looked, it was 803 and by the end of the day, it was 806. And this doesn't include our monitoring students, our students who have recently exited within one or two years, then our numbers would be more closer to 900. This increase has been wonderful, to be able to open our, our doors and our arms to diversity and culture, but this has put a lot of pressure on our current systems. We need increased ESOL teacher and bilingual pair professional staffing. Some of our courses, like our Atlas, our Acquisition Through Language and Supports, otherwise we refer to them informally as newcomer courses, like Newcomer Literacy and MAP. They were meant for rapid intervention and immersion and now our numbers are so large in those courses that our students are making growth, but, but it could be, it could be quicker and more. So those are my considerations and this is open to your discussion and comments.
So what is it exactly you're asking for?
Um, I, I would love increased bilingual pair professional staffing. We could really use a full-time 4K ESOL teacher. Right now, we have a .5 ESOL teacher at 4K for nine different sites and there are 57 dual-language learners, but, but of course, that's, that's always a need. Also just support of our, of our students, making it known that our district supports our English language learners, especially with changing political administrations, but knowing that our district is nonpartisan and we've worked with all sorts of political administrations in the past and though our refugee ceiling might change in, in the coming future, that may offer us some maintenance years to really focus on the academics with our students, that with this increased number, we've kind of been in the hot seat for.
Related to your ask about ESOL for early learning, this is one of the things I've learned a lot about over the last couple of weeks. Can you talk a little bit about, I think this might be a combination answer from the two of you, about the limitations right now related to, well, it's not so much identifying the needs of ESOL students in 4K, it's getting funding for them, if I'm understanding correctly? And is there any way that we can address this and/or specifically, Stephanie, about the DPI is going to be modifying things next year? Do we think there's anything on the state level that would include 4K learners earlier in the year that we could get funding to support them?
I'm, I'm not sure if the DPI has plans to include 4K or update that. The current situation is we screen these English learners, either they can screen at the end of their 4K year or the beginning of kindergarten to officially become what the state officially become what the state considers an English language learner, and that's why at 4K level, they're known as DLLs, dual-language learners. So I believe that impacts funding because they're not technically considered an English language learner until we screen them, but that screening doesn't take place until the end of 4K or beginning of kindergarten year.
And if I learned correctly, I want to say that 4K is our largest number, uh, we have a very large number of young learners who are, well, dual-language learners. I want to say 90? I don't remember the exact number, but that's a concern for me, that we are not providing the services that we can for those kids. To get them, and honestly, if we can intervene earlier, they will need services much less long.
Um, yeah, I don't have the exact data on this, but I know the younger students make a larger amount of growth in their English language acquisition when they're younger versus when we have students coming in 10th grade who are, have limited and interrupted formal education, um, it takes them a little bit longer. And so the earlier we can provide those services, that's going to help our reclassification data and not have as many long-term ELs or English learners stuck in the system for years and years and years who just haven't shown English proficiency.
Still a little confused.
So this is the approval of, of the skeleton of the plan, right? And so inside of the plan, we, and we, so this is just something that we do annually to be able to give us a framework for the plan. As we work through our staffing process, then we'll fill in the gaps in the request based on what the plan, outline of the plan provides.
Okay.
And any changing dynamics that we would have between now and projections that we would have in the spring, we'll be constantly communicating, um, you know, on what the, what those needs are. But we need, we need some framework to be able to work from, um, and so this, again, not a lot of changes from the framework that we've had historically to where we have right now. We just need an adoption of that framework, and like was mentioned, we'll make sure that we update that as the DPI updates, you know, in the upcoming years, uh, when we bring this framework back next December. So, so this is just an annual process, um, and again, we'll work through our staffing, staffing numbers accordingly.
Got it. Sorry for my confusion.
No.
Yes.
One thing I, that I find interesting, and I don't think we talk about it enough, is the benefits that having refugees in our schools bring to our students. So can you talk a little bit about what kind of benefits that our students have from having diverse backgrounds and different cultures, et cetera?
Um, so I, I think it's, it's been a gift to have our students of refugee backgrounds in these buildings to provide their cultural input. Also, our district as a whole is experiencing things that we, we haven't had to experience, like, um, like when Ramadan comes around and, and being able to celebrate that. Or I know, um, at Vell Phillips, Dr. Winn had someone come and do the African-American spiritual experience music, and our students of refugee background from Africa came to enjoy that and had real connections and could make connections between their African culture and African-American culture.
That's so cool. Amazing.
Yeah, and I would, I would also say, um, for students who might have, um, limited exposure or experience, uh, with peers or friends who might be from a different country or speak a different language, this is an opportunity to provide students who are from Oshkosh and from America with, um, exposure to a global view of, um, culture and identity and perspective. And I think that that makes, when we talk about developing the whole child and having a well-rounded experience, um, having peers and friends with that global perspective, I think prepares our students to be global-minded citizens.
Awesome. Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I just want to commend you for a very comprehensive and meaningful report. I, in, in an earlier phase of my career oversaw, um, what was then called the ESL program, now the ESOL program in the district, and I'm very impressed with how you've tied so many components together in such a clear manner of communication. It also struck me in looking at, um, the OASDEL student data, when you looked at the 797 now 803, that is more students than you find in some of our smallest districts in this state. That could be an entire school district in many, in many locations. So to me, that was very impressive. I also noted, near the end of your report, you cited an author by the name of Joyce Epstein. I don't know if she is still around, but when Patty Vicman was a, was a principal in our district, which goes back a few years, she was referring to Joyce Epstein and using that as a basis for parent engagement at her, her school. So, um, I'm glad to see, and we always say in education, things circle around, and so this may be an example of that. You referenced changes on a national level, potential changes on a national level, which could certainly impact the number of refugees coming into northeast Wisconsin, since the Green Bay Catholic Diocese has been a big promoter and a big supporter of refugees coming into this area, along with World Relief. If the numbers were to change on a national level, given that we have 800-plus students already in the district, that number could grow because of what is referred to as secondary migration. That is, a family or families come to a particular part of the United States, but they have family members in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, so they move because they want to be with, with family. So regardless of what happens at the, um, national level, there still could be an increase in our, in our students here. And as we all know, we have a legal obligation to educate all students. There has been talk at the state level, and this might be something that our legislative committee would like to look at, of the DPI counting the ESOL students not as a 1.0 FTE, but something greater than that, whether that would be 1.2 or 1.5, because of the additional time and resources that, um, may be needed, especially when we're talking about middle and, and high school students who don't have a lo, as long a runway to take the classes that they need for perhaps post-secondary education of some kind. But, um, mainly, I just wanted to commend you for a very comprehensive and, um, well-thought-out plan to serve, um, this special group of students, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog.
Uh, I, well, I guess I want to make two points. I mean, obviously, my professional life, I am contracted with World Relief, so I'm very intimately aware of this. We do 100% expect that, uh, first, that, that refugee numbers will end on January 20th. Uh, and to your point, Barb, I do think that, uh, we may have some secondary migrants, and, uh, I, I do want to point out that World Relief considers, at least in my experience, uh, the Oshkosh Area School District to be a terrific partner in doing what we can to support our students and families with a refugee background, and it's, this has gone on for years. And there is a reason that we do get a decent number of secondary migrants to our area that, that, that people feel that they're welcome here, that they, that they can find housing to some extent, and that there are supports available to students. Um, and then my other comment I do want to make is just one personal story about the impact of our ESOL programs. My clients are Afghans generally, they came here in 2021, um, and one of my greatest victories was something that had nothing to do with the legal work that I did, but one of my clients was, well, at the time that I was helping her, a 17-year-old girl, and she, um, you know, if, if she were still in Afghanistan, she literally would not be in education. She would be sitting at home, she's, the girls are not allowed to go to school in Afghanistan right now. Uh, she not only graduated from Oshkosh North, but with the assistance of ESOL and liaison staff, multicultural liaison staff from the district and with me, uh, we helped her be enrolled at UW Oshkosh, um, and she is doing great. She's in her second year there. She navigated PAFSA, which was with the help very much of, of staff members here, uh, and that's a huge victory. Like, that's the real impact of these kids. She's fluent English, she is, uh, excelling, and she's going to have a great future here in the United States. She is leading her family into their new life here, and that's, that's what the district has done for these kids, so it matters.
I forgot one point I wanted to raise. I had an opportunity to talk with, um, two individuals in the community who are actively engaged in working with some of our refugee students, and a question they raised was about food and the school lunch program. I know we try to teach them English, we, we try to teach them math, we want them to excel in the classroom, but the food that we, and I'm not criticizing our school lunch program, so please don't take it that way, but there are cultural differences in what people eat or don't eat. And so I guess a wondering I have, based on my interaction with these two individuals, is how do we accommodate some of those, um, cultural differences or needs when it comes to food with these students so that we don't have students not eating because they don't know what it is, or they don't know how to eat it? Should they pick it up? Should they cut it? What should they do with it? Uh, it may be foreign to their palate, just like some things may be foreign to my palate, but, um, I'm not, I have a choice of what, or a choice of what I eat.
So you, you may have noticed that they added to the, the district lunch menu pictures of a pig or a cow to indicate, because many of our families, um, for religious reasons or cultural reasons can't do pork. Um, but other than that, we have ESOL teachers at the secondary and elementary level that, that make a visual, um, lunch menu that shows a picture of what the food is so the students know. I do think there is always a, a need for education of if they've never seen that food before, um, so I think there is a growing need for that.
Thank you.
All good. Call the question, please.
Call the question.
Aren't we voting?
Yeah.
The acceptance of the plan?
Yeah, we got approval on it.
Aye.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And updates to policy, 0167.3, public comment at board meetings.
So moved.
Wright?
Second.
Carolyn, discussion. Any discussion?
Tim? Well, I'll say the same thing that I said last time. Uh, you know, I, I think, when it came to looking at books and potentially not allowing them in the library, I couldn't suppress ideas when it came to Title IX. My concern was we were suppressing people's ideas. This, to me, is the same thing. I've heard the argument that we just want people withstanding, and I go, if a grandparent lives in Winnicott and they show up here, they are technically, by this policy, not allowed to speak. And I don't understand what it is that we're trying to accomplish with this, to say, "You have to be in Oshkosh." To me, there are many people that have a right to come and talk to us, and I look at the last board meeting, we had nobody come and speak. I look at tonight, nobody came to speak. If somebody shows up from Berlin or wherever and they wanted to talk for three minutes, I feel like we should listen to them. So my opinion in this case is, if this is what we want to do, I will vote no on this.
Ms. Monahan? I, um, I am frustrated by this conversation. We had a detailed conversation about this in our committee meeting. Dr. Hess was not able to attend the committee meeting. However, he could have contacted me and said, "Hey, Steph, I don't, I don't agree with what's happening here," because I had the same concerns. We are a board, we should be functioning as a board. If you have reservations on policy, the proper procedure is to go to the board chair and discuss it. Now I feel like coming in at the 11th hour when the TV cameras are rolling is not good manners, okay? Now, because of Dr. Hess's, uh, statement, I would like to send this back to the committee because I also had concerns about limiting our conversation. We had a great discussion about it. Molly weighed in, Beth weighed in, Dr. Davis weighed in, and I just, I just think that when we have these kind of disagreements, bring it up in the committee level. Don't wait until the 11th hour, just because the TV is rolling, to bring up concerns. This is not what we are supposed to do at this meeting. Sending it back to the committee, I'm fine with that, but we have just wasted time of all the administrators that came to that meeting and weighed in on this issue and debated this issue, and I just, moving forward, I do not appreciate this kind of behavior. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
I will. Yes, I move to send it back to committee.
I think we have, don't we have to vote this down then, and then make the motion to send it back to committee, if that's what we want to do?
I think you could delay, well, I mean, it's, it's been tabled once, right? I mean, that would be another way to be able to work through it.
The only reason I don't want us to vote on it right now is because I want to get more input from some of the staff that was in the meeting, and I thought they made some good arguments about why we should limit it to, um, people that live in our community, to keep it localized, et cetera, et cetera. But I am in favor of us working as a board together, and when we have three board members that are uncomfortable with limiting public comment, that warrants it to go back to committee, in my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah.
So motion to hold or to postpone to go back to committee? So we, Carolyn, as.
I'll second you.
Okay. Ready to commit a call?
Ready. So we're voting to. Send it back to committee. One more time.
And what would we gain from delaying a vote?
Well, we would be able to hear the viewpoints of committee members who had a strong feeling against doing that, which we didn't get an opportunity to do before, and we would hear input from staff and administrators that weighed in on it before.
And because it's policy change, we have to be more on board with it than a regular decision anyways, so.
We need a two-thirds vote.
Yes, so.
Do we need five votes?
Yep. Of the full board.
Of the full board, okay.
Okay, can you please read the motion?
I just have written down, "Motion to move Resolution 12 back to committee."
Call the question.
Smutley.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, request for future agenda items. Announcements.
No.
Okay. Uh, we are going to adjourn to executive session, where we'll be considering the disciplinary data of specific people in regards to an expulsion and considering employment promotion, compensation, performance evaluation of a public employee. So moved.
Second.
Carolyn, Hess?
Wright.
Yeah.
Wyman. Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll do it. I have a solid.